Okay, I think we are ready to go. Jennifer, am I right? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. It is 7:07 on the 17th of November. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Secretary, can you please take the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Present.
Tobias.
Present.
It's a big day, City of Kyle. We have two new council members on the dais. I would like to welcome new Councilmember Ashley Bradshaw and Councilmember Flores Cale. Glad to have you guys joining us up here. Next item is approval of the minutes.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of special meeting November 4th, City Council Meeting November 4th, and special council meeting for November 10th.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, a second by Councilmember Tobias, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up is citizens' comments. If you would like to say something, there is a citizens' comment form up front. We just ask that you fill out the comment form and hand it to either I or our secretary. I have three public comment forms already filled out up here. The first one is Mr. Anthony Torres with the Salvation Army. Mr. Torres? And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a minute. My name is Anthony Torres. I represent the Salvation Army out of San Marcos in Hayes County. I'm here today to ask for your help. It is our annual season for bell ringing at the local Walmart here in Kyle, and so I'm needing some bell ringers. And I'm hoping that myself coming today kind of gets the City of Kyle and the community of Kyle motivated to help us ring in the new year. I will tell you that we serve Kyle, the City of Kyle, in our center in San Marcos. We may not have a presence locally in your town, but we serve your community from San Marcos. We get a lot of folks. We help with utilities. Last year alone, we spent about $90,000 helping people with utilities assistance. That's a lot of people, and that's not everybody that we could have helped if we had more money. So, the amount of money that we collect from the City of Kyle, the City of Buta, and from the City of San Marcos helps thousands of people in your county. So it's really, really important that we try to get some folks out. Now, in the past, the Walmart locally has not been represented well. We haven't done a good job at staffing the local Walmart with bell ringers so that we can collect money from your community. So I'm coming to you for help because we don't own enough people locally, and I'm hoping that you guys do and that all of you can reach out to your family members, to your coworkers, your constituents, to sign up for bell ringing. This year's a little different. You can go online to registertoring.com, and I have some flyers here that I'll leave at the back door here. You just go online, you type in your city, Kyle, and it'll populate Walmart. You can choose the shift you want. Everything is done online. It takes a second to do, but the impact to the community is great, just by two-hour shifts, two hours of your time to ring at Walmart, and it's gonna serve somebody along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Real quick, is that the only location that we'll have for this year?
We have, we're ringing at all three Walmarts, City of San Marcos, City of Kyle, and City of Buta, and at Cabela's. If we get enough bell ringers, we'll add Sam's Club in San Marcos and J.C. Penney's Walgreens. But for now, we're gonna concentrate on Walmart and Cabela's.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry. I was just wondering if you guys have like a Venmo and other ways that people can donate besides just the bell ringers?
Good question. We have on our website, Register to Ring, there is a button that you can click to donate what we, how we do a, oh my goodness, my mind just went blank. There's a button that you can click on that page that will allow you to donate. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Tracy Shield.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor, Council. My name is Tracy Shield, for the record. I was at the blessing of the bells this morning for the Salvation Army, and that was a wonderful and very enlightening program this morning. And so with that, I did want to challenge the council. I also wanted to challenge staff and any residents to help volunteer. And I know that he did say that, you know, Walmart was where the bell ringers are gonna be, but also if you've ever been, you know, to our HEB, you can pull a little paper tag at the register, and you can also donate that way. But I do. I know I'm gonna sign up for a shift or two, and so I do. I challenge the staff, I challenge the council to also sign up, and they even said that they put up a little sign that said this is a council member so that they know that the council does care and the council is here for the residents of this city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shield. Next up, I have Ms. Martha Lyons.
Good evening, Mayor, oops, good evening, Mayor and Council. The reason I wanna get up here today is 'cause I read about the renaming of Rebel Road. The committee having six names, I believe, that they're getting ready to move to the next level. And I see here that they're asking for more comments or considerations, recommendations from citizens. And when this first all came about, I actually sent an email to all the past council members and mayor, and nobody replied to me except for Tracy. And she did make me aware that there would be the application process. She said she would get back to me, and that never happened, but I got it from somebody else, so I immediately applied, and I wasn't chosen. So, I'm wondering, then I heard through the rumor mill that the number of people had been extended, but still I never got invited. So, if there's a way to get into the team now, I would like to do that. And wondering why I never got chosen to maybe represent my area. But I wanna talk about the six names that the Free Press listed today. Brazilians Drive, Driftwood Drive, it might as well be Salt Lick Drive. I don't know who Sylvester Herrera is, and if we're gonna name the street White Drive, we might as well keep it Rebel Road. White Drive is not gonna get it. There's MLK. All right, we know he did plenty. The only name that I see here that maybe we could use with an attachment prior to Freedom Drive is Dorman Lopez Freedom Drive. And I know y'all don't recognize those names. Michael Dorman and Alfredo Lopez Jr., again, as I stood before you guys months ago, are two Vietnam veterans who were killed. So, Lopez, Dorman, Dorman Lopez Freedom Drive, that would work. But anyway, that's why I came here this evening, and if there's room for me to join the committee, I would be glad to. Okay? And the reason I didn't follow up after I wasn't chosen because I got involved in putting on the Veterans Parade on Veterans Day, so I got pretty busy, and it was very successful. It was small, but it was classy. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Anybody else wishing to speak before we close citizens' comments? No one else wishes to speak? I will go ahead and close citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are now closed. Up next, we have a presentation, the ACC Riverbats Day Proclamation. Mayor Travis Mitchell.
Mayor Protem.
Proclamation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, I'm sorry. This proclamation was brought to by the mayor and was asked to, he asked me to read this out, if that's okay? All right. Mayor Proclamation, whereas Austin Community College District is nationally recognized institution committed to the work that will close unity and the workforce gaps, increase student success, and provide all Central Texans a path to prosperity. And whereas ACC is the home of the Riverbats, a vibrant reflection of the students, faculty, staff, and alumni who live, learn, and work across Central Texas. And whereas the ACC Riverbat represents the essence of the college and its mission and values to serve everyone who seeks to learn a new skill or trade and advance their career. And whereas the ACC mascot, RB, the Riverbat, stands for as a symbol of inspiration, pride, tradition, and resolve, and has become a recognized figure across the region for building hope among all communities that college is for everyone. And whereas it is the hope of the college that the Riverbat, every student, alumni, friend, and supporter cultivates a strengthening connection to ACC's missions, value, and commitment to building a college-going culture. And whereas November 2020 recognizes the 10th anniversary and the selection of the Riverbat as the ACC mascot. Now therefore, Travis Mitchell, I, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of City of Kyle, do hereby proclaim November 17, 2020, as ACC Riverbat Day in Kyle, Texas, in witness, where I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of City of Kyle to be affiliated on this 17th day of November in the year 2020.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And if I could add real quick, my oldest son, Michael Andrew, is a mascot for the college. He's been there for two years and is very active in the community service with the college itself, attends a lot of events, and he's very proud and honored to be part of that organization.
Mayor, did you have anything to add to that?
I was just gonna bring that up to make sure that somebody embarrassed him. So, thank you, Councilmember Tobias. I think we were gonna actually have some folks here to take a photo, but in light of recent events, we had to reschedule that, so no further comments.
Okay. Moving on, we will go to item number six, Native American Indigenous People Heritage Month Proclamation. Councilmember Dex Ellison.
All right, thank you all. Just get my bearings here real quick. All right. So, I put together a City Council Proclamation for Native American Indigenous People Heritage Month, which takes place in internationally recognized in the month of November in our country. And so I have a City Council Proclamation that I'd like to read tonight and hopefully get you all's support and signing, passing of this. City of Kyle, City Council Proclamation, whereas in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November 1990 National American Indian Heritage Month. Similar proclamations under variations of the name, including Native American Heritage Month and National American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month, have been issued each year since 1994. And whereas there are over 560 federally recognized Native American tribes, in addition to an unknown number of tribes that are not federally recognized. According to the Indigenous Cultures Institute, there are more than 200 Native American groups located now in Central and Southern Texas and northeastern Mexico when the Spanish first arrived. Three are federally recognized as tribes, Alabama Cushada Tribe of Texas, Kikapu Traditional Tribe of Texas, and Yeslada del Sur Pueblo. Whereas the City of Kyle indicates support and appreciation for Native Americans and their families, whom have chosen to call Kyle and Central Texas areas their home, as well recognizes the many great contributions made by Native Americans to this country. And whereas members from many Native American nations have served with distinction and in a way that helped the U.S. win World Wars I and II through the use of their various native languages. Their military service has continued to be important in the wartime conflicts of Korea, Vietnam, Desert Storm, and Iraq. And whereas, according to the latest census data, Kyle is home to over 200 persons of Native American descent. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Kyle, Texas, that on this day, November 17, 2020, we recognize November as Native American Indigenous People Heritage Month in the City of Kyle. This proclamation shall take effect from and after the date of passage as authorized by the Charter of the City of Kyle. I do wanna say I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for, to a couple of residents that helped me as well gather information to include in this proclamation. Always the goal with our proclamations, to help educate and hopefully inform folks. So I'd like to thank Vanessa Westbrook and Laura McMahon for helping me with some information to put in here, and I certainly appreciate you all's support on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanna thank Councilmember Ellison for bringing this proclamation forward. You know, as I traveled throughout the Montana, Wyoming, I am very taken by all the tributes that have been put out there, especially at the Battle of Little Big Horn, the monument out there for the indigenous people is amazing. It's a beautiful monument and gives tribute to them. But here locally, there's a book that I encourage everybody to read, is Empire of the Summer Moon. It's a book about Quanta Parker, the Rise and Fall of the Comanche Nation, but it talks about the indigenous people here in Central Texas and how it all, their lives intertwined here, and what an impact they were, and how it was, it's a great story. It's a great book. I hope, I encourage everybody to read it. It's a book that I've read twice, and I share it with all my family members, it's a great book. So hopefully you get a chance, it's history of Texas and the indigenous people, so hopefully you'll be able to read it.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second, sir.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Coach, a second by Councilmember Rizzo. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number seven, this is a fun one, presentation on downtown Christmas festivities, including park lighting and Santa on the square. Director of Parks and Recreation, Mariana Espinoza.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Department Director, for the record. So, the Parks and Recreation Department is again decorating the downtown Mary-Kyle-Hartson City Square Park. We've been really thrilled that this year, the Environmental Services and Trades Division has also been able to help us wrap the trees. Last week, we wrapped all the trees in downtown. We were able to go up just a little bit higher on every single tree this year, giving us about a 20% increase in the number of lights, as far as the trees being wrapped this year. Each year, the City of Kyle hosts an annual Santa on the Square event, or it's called Santa's Arrival. It includes choirs, music, Santa takes visits with all the children, and the tree lighting. However, this year, at the recommendation with both the staff and the Parks Board, this year's event is not planned to be held in person. Santa has some plans to do drive-throughs throughout the City of Kyle, in addition to some virtual visits, and the plan for the tree lighting will still take place, however, it will be aired on different social media platforms. So the tree is normally lit on the first Wednesday in December. So, the tree lighting will still take place. We have a brand-new Christmas tree this year that we're extremely excited about, and the lights at downtown park will be lit nightly between the dates of December 3rd and January 4th. They will come on every night at 6:00 p.m., and then they will stay on till the morning time. The light display at downtown City Square Park not only includes a brand-new Christmas tree, but the popular lighted tunnel that our former park maintenance manager created last year will be triple the size this year. We will also be decorating the old city hall, the Krug Activity Center, which we didn't get to do last year because it was under some renovations, so we're really excited about that. The gazebo's also gonna be lit again, and we'll have some photo op opportunities throughout the park again. So we're really excited. The staff has been working extremely hard all of last week, this week, and then going into next week, we'll be starting to put the Christmas tree up. As I mentioned, Santa will not be at the square on that Wednesday. He will be doing visit, or virtual drive-throughs through the city. So on December 5th, from 10:00 to 12:00, he's gonna go on the east side of Interstate 35 to make sure that he takes some time in all the different neighborhoods, and we will be updating the Parks Department website with Santa's path and his map for the day. And then on December 12th, from 10:00 to 12:00, he will hit the west side of the interstate, making sure that he hits all of the neighborhoods and the city limits as well. So if you guys have any questions, or if I missed something, please let me know, but we're really excited about this year's display and for getting the tree lit.
Can I confirm that 10:00 to 12:00 is AM and not PM?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Just really quick, thank you for taking this on again this year. I look forward to it. Last year, you did an amazing job, the staff, everybody, and you gave the city a sense of pride, so thank you for that. It was a beautiful light display. I'm gonna ask you to raise that bar a little higher, and I know you are, and I think it's gonna be great, just reminding everybody that this is gonna be open to the public, but let's remember to social distance, wear our masks, take all the precautions so that we can continue to have this light show up throughout the entire holidays. And just wanna say thank you for all the hard work your staff does.
Thank you. I'll be sure I pass it along.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We see you out there working already. I drove by downtown yesterday for lunch, and I saw your crew already working on some of the lights on the gazebo thing out there, so it's coming soon, and there's a lot of people that are very excited for it. We've had a very long year. We've lost so much, so this is gonna bring a lot of joy to our residents to see that. So, thank you and your crew for stepping up and getting it done early and making it bigger and better for everybody. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. The traditional countdown to the days of Christmas is up, and so that, he's ready to start counting down. So that one's ready. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, I wanna just piggyback on exactly everything Councilmember Rizzo and Tobias said as well. This is a bright spot that I think showed our city a lot of enthusiasm and support with this. I was out there last year a number of different times, just surveying folks and asking them about our lights in our square, and to see everyone light up, it just makes me smile right now in talking about it. And we even got that proposal that Mayor Mitchell was hoping for there as well. And then we're even asking you to shoot even higher this year. So isn't that a wonderful thing? And if anybody can do it, Team Kyle can do it. So certainly appreciate it. Please, please share our thanks and gratitude and support from the council as an extension of us speaking on behalf of the entire city that we represent, how grateful and appreciative we are for the hard work they do and the learning curve they had with initially doing it, and probably got some better tricks about it this year. But we thank you all, and it surely brings a lot of joy to this city. So, thank you, Mariana, and your team.
Thank you. I'll absolutely share that with the team.
Mariana, you know how much pressure?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
You know how much pressure we put on you last year when you had just come on to make this happen? It was important to this council. It proved to be a worthy endeavor for this council because we saw the reaction by the citizens and how much joy they received from it. What I heard from you tonight was 20% more lights in the trees and two new areas of the park lit, the gazebo and the Krug Center, and then an expansion on the tunnel.
That is correct. And the gazebo was actually lit last year, and we just added to it this year.
Okay, okay.
And the bell tower, we've also added decoration to the bell tower as well.
Well, I think this is the most important event of the year for us because this is the one that we can actually have and give to the citizens for an extended period of time that allows them to be socially distant and still enjoy the amenity of a lit park. So I thank you and the Parks crew for already working diligently out there, getting it set up, for listening to the cry of the council last year to make this one even better and to, you know, build on it every single year. So I look forward to seeing it. I look forward to being out there, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Pass it along. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mariana. Next up, item number eight, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Leon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. I'm here to update you on our current projects. We'll start off with Lehman Road. Not much has changed since the last time I presented to you. They are still working on their pencil list items. They had a pretty lengthy list. They still have a few more items to work on with their ADA issues that they gotta correct. On Burleson, we're pretty much in the same situation there. We have pencil list items they need to wrap up, and today they were actually working on some of their ADA issues, so they're still trying to wrap that project up. We're hoping they can wrap it up before the end of this month coming up. Next one, South Side. We're about 69% complete on that project. This is a picture of the listation that we're building there. Pretty good progress since the last time. Second crew that we have working out there is working by the prison, and they're working on the lines there. We have a third crew that's working on the boars on the north end of the project. There's two boars they still have to complete there. And those, by the way, those two boars, that's a reclaimed water line and a gravity line. One of the projects that's coming up that I'll talk to you about is the Elliott Branch Project. The Elliott Branch Project ties into those lines there. So that's why it's real important for us to get that, those boars completed and get that project complete there. The next one, Expansion Project. We're almost 20% complete on that project. That project's been moving along very well. With the weather that we've had, they've been able to take advantage of it. Of course, we did have a little bit of rain, but they were able to work through it. So as you can see, they're still working on quite a bit of work out there. This next picture will show you the overall view of the site. There's quite a bit of work going on out there. And the expected completion of this project, of course, is in April or May of 2022. Bent Creek Interceptor, we're getting ready to start another section of the interceptor line that we've been working on for several years. This is the last piece that we have to put in to connect the Bent Creek Interceptor. We should start work beginning of December on that project. Wellsite Elevated Storage, we're on number, it's Wellsite Number Four. We're hoping to start that on December 15th, if not sooner, and get that repainted inside and out. We're hoping to start that on December 15th, if not sooner, and get that repainted inside and out. There's two consent agenda items. Number 10 is a contract award to Chromex Construction. They are the contractor that we're wanting to recommend for the Elliott Branch Project. What I've got up here on the slide shows you the limits of the project. It starts at Scott Street and goes all the way to I-35 on the west side of I-35. It will connect there to the South Side Project. And we plan to start that hopefully later this year or early next year. That purple line is a reclaimed water line. Just to let you know, that reclaimed water line continues up through the Stagecoach subdivision, which we've been kind of building in sections. We have another section that's to the right of that that's already in place, too. So, we're trying to build a reclaimed water system for the city. On item number 11, that's a contract with RPS. They're the designers of the Elliott Branch Project. We are asking them to do the contract administration on the project. Old Post Road, we have a meeting tomorrow with the county. There's quite a bit of things that we need to discuss with the county as to who's going to do what and when. So, it'll probably be a good two-hour meeting on that one just to discuss all the issues that go along with that project. Tech stop permitting's still underway. We're still working with them. And we still are working with the right-of-way issue that we have at the south end of the project to try to get that wrapped up. And we're still waiting for Hayes County to get back to us on the interlocal agreement so we can go ahead and implement that. This is Etta Ranch Roundabout, which has caused a number of issues for us lately. They did start construction November 4th. They estimated about three months. I talked to the engineer today, or yesterday. He said they're about 30% complete, which is a good sign. As you can see, they've got most of it excavated. Hopefully, they'll start getting the base and asphalt in there, start covering that up so we can get it opened up as soon as possible. Mr. Sellers, did you want to mention what we were trying to do to help out with the project?
Council City Manager Scott Sellers for the record. Typically, when we do road projects that involve altering traffic patterns, we give it two to three weeks to see how the pattern reacts. Most people find a new time of day to leave, to make their daily trips. Either maybe they won't leave the house, find alternate routes, et cetera. But it usually resolves itself. In this case, due to the limited methods for the traffic to resolve, there's really just a couple of ways in and out. We've been watching the situation. We've been hoping it was gonna clear after the first week and a half or so, a couple of weeks. So far, there's still a lot of traffic. And so, we've taken a much closer look at other ways that we can alleviate the heavy backups in that area. I know Hayes County has gotten very interested in seeing how they might be able to help us as well. A couple of things that we've done. We've sent some of our officers out there to direct traffic. We've done that now several times. I asked the chief to put together an analysis of what that would look like if we continued through the duration of the project. We're looking at quite a bit of overtime costs since these would be extra officers that we'd bring in for traffic control, somewhere in the $6,000 to $7,000 a week range. When you consider we've got a couple more months of this project, it very quickly becomes a cost that's not affordable anymore. However, we have talked in the past, and I don't know if you recall, with the West RM150 project, we mentioned portable traffic signals. At the time, we actually were looking at bringing them forward for purchase. This would have been a great opportunity to put those back into use. We did not purchase those at the time. But they are available for rent, and we can rent those signals immediately. There are four signals that we would propose to place on Dacey and Bibi, which is the primary intersection that gets backed up. The county, in its Dacey Lane project, will ultimately put a signal there, which will be great until then. And while we have this project for the next two months, if we put this temporary signal up there, we could time it so that most of the east-west traffic is able to flow through there. That would cost us about 17, somewhere in the $17,000 to $18,000 range for the two-month duration of the project. And that is what we would like to move forward with. It's a little outside of my spending authority just to do it under the $15,000 discretion that I have. But with council's blessing, what we would like to do, not have you make a vote on it, but what I would like to do is propose that we do move forward with the expenditure to rent those devices for the next couple of months, help the traffic flow through there. We add it to the overall project cost, and we bring it back at the end of the day when the project is done to square up any overruns. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. We've done a lot of analysis. We think this is the best plan moving forward.
Scott, Councilmember Rizzo for the record. I want to thank you all for addressing this and looking for options. I was out there Saturday and got to witness a lot of the traffic and actually an accident as well. And this has been heading for the residents out there. One reason is we don't have a lot of different access points for them to get into those new communities. So, thank you all for getting on this. Leon, thank you for the update. The 30% makes me happy. I think it gets a lot of people excited about it. Hopefully, we can get this project done pretty quickly. And if we can continue to monitor it, it would be great. But I would also ask you to take a look at those machines. We're growing as a city, and a road crew is growing bigger. I think the lights might be an investment for a future project, so something we might want to keep into consideration and see if there's gonna be some roadways. We've got Stagecoach coming up. We've got Benton Creek coming up, Button Road coming up, and other Sinister Street projects, they might be utilized later, so.
Councilmember, I think it's a very wise purchase. You know, for four signals, it'll cost us around $160,000 roughly. That's an old estimate, so we'll have to look again. But you're right, we will have ongoing need for these types of signals, probably four of them. They work as what's called a master and slave combination. So, if you have one intersection, one would control the other signals through there. If the council would come through, you know, I think we have some funds based on the coronavirus relief funds, not that this qualifies as for that amount of money, but that will offset and free up some other funds that we've already expended out of the general fund. So, if that's something the council would like us to look at, we can move forward. Maybe in a pinch, maybe look at renting. Or if council wants to move forward, we can try to get those purchased and set up very quickly.
I like the thoughts of our other council members, but I'm thinking this is something, as we continue to grow the city and our road department grows, I think this is something that we might be lacking, a piece of equipment that will help us mitigate traffic flow in future areas.
I agree.
This is Councilman Tobias. Mr. Sellers, I'm pretty sure you're in. Leon, you know I'm very vocal on this because it's an area where I live out in District 6. Like Councilman Rizzo said, I actually rolled up on that accident about minutes after it happened. The traffic flow leaving out of the neighborhood of Kensington Trails is horrible. Okay. There are people there that are cutting through streets. They're speeding. I know I've talked to the chief about traffic control, and it's getting worse. And as much as I understand that the process to get this roundabout done quickly, just currently, especially on these past two weekends, we've got to be able to do something before somebody gets seriously injured in an accident or a fatality out there. Because patients go roam thin, especially when you've got to go around. People have to take extra time to go to work. I've actually heard from a resident that lives in Bunton. Her son goes to Lehman. He has to drive an entire hour just to get to his school, which is less than 10 minutes away. He has to go all the way around, and then you're stuck with all that traffic. So, it is a big concern for her, also with the people that are living, again, on Bibi and so forth, right by that elementary school as well. So, anything we can do going forward to ease that traffic and get patrolled out there if we can, the residents deserve that. The residents and citizens need to be able to have that safety out there as much as possible. So, thank you both and everybody else for addressing this with me. And it's a big concern for Councilman Rizzo, and I'm sure the rest of the DIs that we can continue to move forward on this. Thank you.
Any other questions for...
I think I had one more project.
Okay.
Hate to say this, but we have another closure coming up. Paramount Subdivision, sorry. Paramount Subdivision, as you know, is a south part of the city on the west edge of the railroad tracks. We thought they were gonna start this week, but they didn't. They've been delayed, and they haven't given us a definite date. But they will be closing Opal Lane, and they'll be routing traffic onto Roland Lane. So, we're trying to get a definite date and time from them and the traffic control plan so we can share that with everyone. So, that's coming up. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that also. That's it. And for updates and any information, we're encouraging our citizens to click on this link here and then check on our projects.
Any other questions for Leon or Mr. Sellers? Okay, thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
Next up, Consent Agenda Items 9 through 18.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Number 9 through 18, unless someone wants to pull anything?
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, a second by Councilmember Tobias, to approve Consent Agenda Items 9 through 18 as written. Any further discussion? All in favor? Hold on. Did you say "aye"? Did you want to speak?
I was just...
You were just voting at that time? Jumped the gun? Okay. One more time. All in favor, say "aye". Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I'm sure it was a lovely thought.
Yeah, thank you. Just don't talk, Dex. I get it.
Y'all have to give us an extra second or two because if we want to talk through the virtual monitor, there's a little bit of a lag time. It's harder to jump in there, so.
Absolutely. I want to make sure that he didn't want to speak on an item as opposed to vote. So, we can always wait for you guys. No problem.
Yeah, it wasn't much to say. I was just gonna mention my excitement about Agenda Item 12, but it's all good. Still voting for it. We can move on.
Okay. Considering Possible Action, Item Number 19, in ordinance mending Chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle for the purpose of rezoning to reduce approximately 2.3 acres of land from PUD, Neighborhood Commercial... Yeah. To rezonate, increase approximately 27.215 acres of land to condominium R1C. This is Howard Kuntz's item. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend this approval. This item does have a public hearing. Did you want to do the public hearing first, or did you want to speak first, Mr. Kuntz?
I have no preference.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing now then, if you don't mind. Is anybody wishing to speak during this public hearing for Item 19? No one is wishing to speak, I will go ahead and close the public hearing for Item 19. It is closed. Mr. Kuntz, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. For the record, my name is Howard Kuntz. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development for the city of Kyle. I'm gonna share my screen real quick so that I can have a couple of visual aids up on the screen. The property that we're looking at right now is located at the far north end of Creekside Trail. So, on the bottom left is East 150. And there's the little Shell gas station. And then, Creekside Trail goes to the northeast and stops up there at an impromptu cul-de-sac. And the property is from that cul-de-sac all the way down to the Plum Creek itself. The request before you is to amend some of the internal boundaries of an earlier PUD zoning that was assigned to this property. The property was assigned a couple of different zonings. You can see the current zoning map shows that it's surrounded primarily by ag. There's M3 to the, I'll call it, the east, the southeast, which is a manufactured home park zoning. And the existing zoning looks a lot like this. So, that cul-de-sac street is on the upper left of this drawing. North is basically sort of to the up and to the right in this drawing. This has been turned a little bit clockwise. So, as you enter the site, there would be a portion of the site that was zoned Neighborhood Commercial. And then, as you move through that area, there would be R1C, which is one-family residential condominium. And then, in the back, that serves as somewhat of a buffer against Plum Creek itself, was going to remain agriculture, which is what the property was when it was first brought up for zoning. The request from the applicant has been to change some of these internal boundaries. So, the internal boundaries will instead look like this. And what they've done is consumed a little bit of the Neighborhood Commercial here along this neighboring property and a little bit of it as it comes up the west side there and changed that out for additional one-family residential units. Additionally, there's been a little bit more that's been consumed so that they can create a stormwater management pond on the low end of the site down next to the Plum Creek. So, the Neighborhood Commercial has shrank a little bit. The ag has shrank a little bit, and the R1C has expanded a little bit to fill those two areas. So, staff has talked extensively with the applicant and her development team. We did take this to PNC a week ago. They did find unanimously to support the request and recommended to the council, similarly to staff, that it be approved.
Okay, thank you, Howard. I think I remember this item from a few years ago, coming forward and getting the zoning change on it at the end of the Creekside. Was there a reason why they shrunk the Neighborhood Commercial? Do they just need more density?
I think it has to do with the expansion of the single-family detached units. So, this entire project is a PUD. Because it's being developed by one entity, Sarah Files plans to put some palliative care in there where it would be some independent type, yet managed living. That is the bulk of what's going on back there. And then, inside that Neighborhood Commercial would probably be more of the multifamily unit that would have more managed care than what's independent in the 27 acres of the main part. So, my expectation is that the numbers of the project, coupled with the business model of what it is that they're doing and the demand that they have, shows that they have more demand for the one-family detached homes more so than the multifamily units.
Any questions for staff?
Councilmember Flores-Cale, and I just have a question. Are they trying to change the zoning so they can add more homes?
The reason that they'll change the zoning is that they will change the type of dwelling units. Previously, when, in this model, this section here that's cross-hatched in, I guess that's pink, would have provisions for multifamily of the managed care. And there were less acres. There was 24.4. Now, they're going to consume a little bit of that with more single-family detached. So, the number of units will decrease. The type of units will change. And because the type of units has changed, they need more room for the detached units than the multifamily units that they would be able to fit in the Neighborhood Commercial.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Mayor Protem. Yeah, Howard, I've got a question real quick. And I'm looking at the map, and I'm looking that they're going into the repairion zone now. Were they already building in there, or is that something added?
No. No, there was no expectation that they would be building down there past those flood areas.
So, are they now...
The reason they have changed the zoning designation interior to the site is so that the stormwater management facilities that are related to the R1C use will also be located in R1C. They don't have to change the land use category of the zoned property to have their stormwater pond on a different portion of the same site.
So, are they building, they're building further down in there, correct? Now? That's the change? Or are they already building there?
Previously, it looked like this. And the plan was always for the pond to be down into this corner. This is their low spot.
Okay.
Previously, the boundary was not down to the corner. See where this... See where this point of beginning is?
I see where...
That was still located in what was ag, which is a separate zoning district. And instead of that, they found that the contours of their pond, such that they needed that to come down to this property line, so they've moved the boundary of that ag zoning back so that they can put the pond there.
And then right above that, the proposed houses that were up there, right, go right, right there? Those were already in there in the original? Or is that what they're adding?
Well, in the original, there was no site plan. In the original, this boundary was commensurate with, I believe, a future land use map boundary of the buffer along the Plum Creek. So they found that that's not actually a building line. It wasn't associated necessarily with 500 or 100-year floodplain. So previously, this remained ag, and the expectation was to build in the 24.4 acres. But when they started putting pen to paper about what they were going to actually build, they found that some field adjustments are going to be necessary to build what it is they want to build in the style that they want to build it.
And I'm looking at the map on it. Looks like they're getting into the trails a little bit, or am I mistaken there? Are they staying just short of the trails?
They will not, they will not be building into any of the park dedication or parkland trails, no.
Okay, because that's what I was worried about. That was my concern right there, they were going into the trail system. And I'm looking at satellite, it looks like it's going in there. Okay?
The trail system will undoubtedly be an amenity to this community. The ability for them to have their own ersatz trailhead, that is for the benefit of the residents, the adjacency is critical, but to say that they're building into it would not be accurate. No, I don't believe that's true.
Okay, sounds good. And then, am I mistaken, but I think some of these houses here are already, are under FEMA flood insurance? They're mandatory, correct? Do you know?
I don't know anything to that, sir.
And I'm just worried about the flooding along Plum Creek. That's why I'm worried about it. I'm thinking that the homes here are, some of them on the edge, are under mandatory flood insurance from FEMA. They have to purchase flood insurance. And I'm just wondering if we go further down, that's what my concern is, getting into a flood stage and putting people into a flood stage, because we've seen what Plum Creek can do sometimes during big rain events. So I'm just making sure that we are taking all the precautions necessary to keep those residents above water, sort of say.
So tonight's question before you is really a land use question. It's a greater question of whether or not this property should be used for residential, or should it be not used for one-family detached residential? As far as the building and the design metrics, a lot of that is covered in the city's stormwater management plan, in our development ordinances, in our building codes. We have two certified floodplain managers that are still employed up here upstairs in City Hall. We have requirements for the first floor elevation being outside of the floodplain, both 100 and 500-year floodplains. So the precautions from a building standpoint are already in place. Those are the minimum standards of our building and development codes, but not necessarily, those aren't necessarily discussed in zoning. Those will be discussed later on. The simple way to state it is, tonight's question is can we? And then the question moving forward would be how can we? They're asking you whether or not they can, whether or not they can do this, and when they, later they'll come to staff and ask, how can they?
Thank you, Howard.
Councilmember Flores Cale, I have a question. Sorry.
Let's, since you've spoken, let's let Councilmember Tobias go.
I'm sorry. Yes, Howard, this is Councilmember Tobias. So these bring up good questions and also concerns. Picking back off of Councilmember Rizzo, flooding issues, was there flooding in that area a couple of years ago, in that section? Because that's a big concern. And also, the roads, as we're having issues right now with the heavy traffic and more development we have in that area, and we only see one road that I see, the Creekside Trail, and by the gas station, I see that there's a stoplight. But again, in the event, and probably will have another flooding in the next years or so, that raises a big concern, especially back in that area. And also, when you have, it's so close to that Plum Creek, the development that we're having out there, we're trying to build those trails, we're investing a lot of time and energy and money into that, and would hate for anything to, hate to use that word hate, but any kind of runoff that will end up in that creek, and also going downstream, are those things that we're really looking at as far as the development of this or what they're requesting?
Yes. Without question, yes. We've already discussed the idea that this, the road, you can see, so in the drawing that's on the screen right now, in the upper left, is currently the end of Creekside Trail. There's an impromptu cul-de-sac that's up there that leads to some of the homes that are up there. All that new area listed as right-of-way dedication is the completion of the city's transportation master plan map. We have a future plan for there to be a north-south crossing from 150, moving to the northeast primarily, we'll just call it north, across Plum Creek eventually into the Walton property, which is Kyle Estates West, and then that will move up to probably Grist Mill or the connection that is going to go forth and Bunton right now. All that's predicated on development that has to happen in the future. So right now, the right-of-way is being dedicated and the plans are being made for that to be completed, but as it stands right now, the developer of this parcel is responsible for the portion of right-of-way and street that is adjacent or interior to their own site. So they're maintaining that, but don't have an expectation that they need to make improvements that are outside of the nexus of what it is that they're doing. So the improvements to Creekside Trail, if required, would be something that the city would have to look at on their CIP. The improvements to the intersection at 150 would have to be done in concert with Texnot because 150 is a Texnot road. And then ultimately, the crossing over Plum Creek going up to Walton would probably be a multi-leg agreement between all the parties involved. So the planning for those things is being done, but that which we can exact from this developer is already being indicated on their site plan.
Thank you. That's my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Flores Cale?
Yes. First of all, my apologies. I ask for grace as I try to figure out all the rules. But I guess my ultimate question is, are you asking to move the line or the zone into the 500-year flood area?
I, they are asking, okay, so the boundary that is, let's go up here. So there will be no construction of any structures occupied or otherwise in the 500-year floodplain, to my understanding, as a function of this plan. Now, consideration of the site plan is actually probably not appropriate at this stage of their development. We're still interested in the general expectation of whether or not residential uses are appropriate, or should it remain solely agricultural uses, or are there other commercial or industrial uses? So the question that they're putting before you is, are the residential one-family condominium units appropriate for this piece of land inside of these boundaries? The movement towards the, I'll call it the northeast, is to accommodate the stormwater management to make sure that the runoff that we talked about earlier doesn't make it into the Plum Creek. In the absence of these improvements, which will capture stormwater and meter that out, in the absence of improvements, everything just sheet flows off of this site right into the lowest area, in this case, the creek. So whenever anything gets built anywhere, you need to be able to make accommodations for that by having stormwater ponds with service, not only water quantity but water quality. So when you're saying, are they moving into the 500-year, there does not look like, from this site plan, again, that anything is going to be built into or closer to any floodplain boundary of the Plum Creek. They're only asking that the stormwater management facility, which is a requirement of the development of the remainder of the residential, be allowed to exist on the same zoning category inside the boundaries of the parent project so that it is associated with the uses that service that pond. They did not want to separate the boundaries of the zoning districts through the same use.
Okay. I'd like to make one thing kind of clear, is this is my neighborhood. I live up front in Brookside, and they, that neighborhood that we're talking about consistently, consistently, consistently floods. And when I say floods, I mean, we tried to drive our Jeep around the, around about, which, by the way, we couldn't fit through, and the water was literally up to our tires. So as it currently stands, there are issues already with this area, so I don't know if I'd be comfortable pushing the zoning back deeper into a flood area when there are already homes there that flood.
Is that what Howard said? That they're pushing them further into the flooding zone?
Howard? None of the homes, none of the homes can be built. And I think Leon's still on the meeting, and he's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my expectation, I believe we made a change in the city of Kyle not that long ago, both for an environmental concern and a building concern, that the first floor elevation of any new structure in the city of Kyle needs to be at least two feet above the 100, and outside of the 500, whichever is higher. So driving through a neighborhood that gets water in the cul-de-sac of the street, although alarming, doesn't concern me as much as water getting into an occupied structure. I don't have, because this is a greenfield site, none of these homes exist today, none of them will be allowed to exist beneath one of those floodplain thresholds. I do not know if there was water on this site during the 750-year flood. I also don't know what the expectation is for that to occur again. The way that floodplain works, there was a 1 in 750 chance that that water would come down at that volume, at that rate during that event. So the odds of that are pretty low. I do not expect that we are creating an opportunity to build more anything, be it homes, streets, infrastructure, what have you, in a way that damages either the project that's being built or the downstream conveyance past what's being built. If that were the case, we wouldn't recommend it.
Howard, it looks to me, when I put both the proposed new boundaries and the old boundaries that are already approved side by side, that the parkland dedication area and that line, which you're saying is the 500-year floodplain, looks like it's curving in towards the middle of the parcel, so it's actually pushing away from the riparian zone. And then the part on the bottom right is a detention pond, or a future planned detention pond, which mitigates flooding. So to me, it looks like they are being responsible with the design to push it, to push the boundary towards the middle of the property. It looks like there's actually more land dedicated for green space and detention. Is that, is that right to assume? Looking at this?
I believe that's true, and there's one more truism, and that's because of the expansion of the R1C and the reduction of the neighborhood commercial. It's likely that they are going to capture more stormwater on impervious surfaces on the, looking at the drawing on the screen now, on the top part up here, and that probably had a commensurate expansion of their detention capacity as well. So everything that you stated was true in addition to the expectation that the pond is growing because they're trying to capture more of what they're building on the site.
I appreciate you being patient with us. We were just making sure we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is on this, because we've seen a lot of the flooding issues in about the city, and I just, I think we were just a little concerned about it, but now that I'm looking at it, I'm seeing that pushing everything back, and it looks like they're making the proper precautions. I have all the confidence in Kathy Rucker that she will look at upstream and downstream to make sure before we go any further that it'll be addressed, so, thank you, Howard.
Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, I will entertain...
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by the mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzo. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. Yeah, and that was one of the things I was trying to get clarified, and thank you, Howard, for your patience with us as we move through these things. I'll say this, I know it's, and having gone through PNC, me and the Mayor Protem are aware of the different stages that come through this, as well as our veteran colleagues. I think it's just when you, when you put a site plan in front of us at this stage, it's going to get critiqued and chewed up by us, and I'll be honest with you, I don't like the site plan the way it looks as it is. But that necessarily isn't the question tonight, and I appreciate you explaining that again for myself and my colleagues. My biggest concern is the road going into there, and what they would do, certainly understand what their responsibility is, but we've kind of set a precedent a few meetings back with getting our road infrastructure, at least a game plan in action before we started doing these, and so I just want to remind my colleagues of that commitment there, as well as the riparian area. Certainly understand that they're going to use that as their park space and different things like that. I know this is getting more into the site plan, but I'm not thrilled about the lack of park space throughout the project. But I think those are just a few of my comments on it. Outside of that, I'm not as concerned about the flooding areas, as Mayor Protem very eloquently pointed out, all the measures that are being taken to mitigate that. I think those are strong, and I know our staff will stay on top of those items as well. We have other neighborhoods, Bunton Creek, we were just talking about earlier, that has a similar approach up to the creek area and different things like that, and it has become an amenity for those that have decided to dwell in those neighborhood and subdivisions, having access to that watershed and that trail system down there. So those are just my concerns. The road is my big hangup.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Councilmember Flores Cale?
Can I just clarify that they're trying to change this from agriculture to a PUD? Is that what they're trying to do?
No, no. The zoning from agriculture to PUD was affected a couple of years ago. The zoning, sorry, the zoning as it looks today is this. So there's an area of neighborhood commercial over here that's...
Can you show your screen, Howard?
Oh.
So that we can see it.
Yeah, why don't I do that?
Sorry.
Not all that good at this stuff yet. Okay, sorry about that. Let me start that again. The zoning as it looks today is this. Now, there is an entire boundary, and that boundary is PUD, and the way PUDs work in the city of Kyle is that you... And the way PUDs work in the city of Kyle is that you can stitch together any of the city zoning districts within the parent boundary of, of your property and have an, an overall expectation that that's a planned unit development within the, the, the property, even if sometimes the lots aren't necessarily suited to be adjacent to one another. The, the example I usually give to clients is that you, you may very well have a warehouse use and then residential right next door. Most people would not consider those two uses to be congruent. However, if you are the type of person that operates a business and you wanted to be able to create housing for your employees adjacent to the site, then it might be completely appropriate because the expectation would be that the folks that live there work next door. You would be able to do that in the city of Kyle underneath the boundaries of a PUD. This project is the same. The, the applicant has come forward with an expectation that they were going to do hospice and palliative care throughout the entirety of the project. And it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 35 acres. It was split up at one time to have higher intensity uses near the entrance and that would allow for multifamily care and then some other uses that would be solely for the benefit of the rooftops adjacent. Those rooftops would exist in a, effectively, you know, just outside the company store here, they would be residential uses, they would be, in their case, it was one family detached, but they would all be owned condominium, meaning the interior of the site would be owned by the occupant, but the grounds and the structures themselves and some of the other infrastructure would be owned in common by the company. And then this portion in the back, they chose to, it would remain ag. They didn't need to assign it a different land use category because the expectation was that it was always going to be either parkland or publicly dedicated to the city of Kyle to further the trail master plan, which was in place at the time of this zoning. So this was the inaugural zoning that was applied at the time that this entire property came into the city at some point dozens of years ago. So at that time, and I, I want to say it was 2017, but time really doesn't have any meaning for me anymore since the early part of this year. So I'm not really sure when it was, but it's been in place for a while. And the operator has been busy. She's got some other business interests, she's got some family interests that are going on, but she has come back to the table, for lack of a better term, and said, hey, Kyle, we're moving forward, we're putting pen to paper. And we have found that they wanted to make some field adjustments. They wanted to change some of the, the boundaries and, and what else is going on. And so they, they came forward with the, the plan that was a little bit of a sharper pencil. And this is their expectation of what they actually want to bring out of the ground. And so what they've done is they, they shrank the existing neighborhood commercial, they expanded the R1C and they also shrank a little bit of what, that back there that was ag, which this, this isn't, the boundary is going to change, but the designation is not going to change anywhere in the site.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ellison?
I was just going to tell Howard, he's correct about 2017.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We were on P&amp;Z, NPT Coach, when this came through.
I, I remember it well. We have a motion to approve and a second. There's no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Next item, item number 20, consider parking ratios to allow for the construction of a Dutch Bros coffee facility located on I-35. Howard, this is another one of your items.
It is, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. This request relates to, sorry, I'm trying to pull this up. This request relates to a parcel of land that is located, hold on, somebody wants to chat with me. Yeah, not now, maybe later, thank you. I'm going to share my screen again. This request relates to a greenfield parcel next to I-35. I don't know why my mouse doesn't work. Okay, well, what do I do? Really, right? Like now? Now it's going to do that? Let me try that one more time. Trying to bring up the staff memo. This is a lot of fun.
The millions watching are very entertained by this.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's an oil painting. I can't do anything about it. All right, I'm going to just have to paint a picture with my words, sorry. Thanks, Bill Gates, love you. Okay, this is related to a parcel of land that is in between the Taco Bell and the tire repair place. Thanks, James. I have absolutely no idea why my PDF ability was taken away from me, but at whatever rate.
I got you, you're good.
This is a piece of land between the Lowe's and the I-35 northbound frontage road. It's between the Taco Bell and the, there's a tire repair place there at Firestone. They're going to build a coffee store. Now, it is solely for drive-through traffic, although there is a walk-up counter for pedestrian service, the walk-up counter is for takeaway service. There, there is no provision in their business model or their site plan for them to have any clients remain at the site and enjoy the product that they purchase. So when they build this, the city of Kyle's parking requirements are predicated when it comes to restaurants and other types of eating establishments. Our parking requirements are predicated on the number of seats for patrons to eat. Typically, it's one parking space for every four seats. Well, there are no seats. So the secondary requirement is that they have a number of parking spaces per the gross square footage of the building. The gross square footage of their building would require them to have so many parking spaces that they wouldn't have room for the building they wish to install. So they've come forward with this special exception request for them to be able to build the site with the number of parking spaces that are listed, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of seven, and those would solely be for the benefit of the staff that works there and maybe the, the occasional patron who wanted to walk up to the window. This is exactly why special exceptions are allowed for in our code. By and large, restaurants are traditional, having interior dine-in seating. This one is not. This is far outside the bounds of what we would call usual and customary. And for that reason, we would rather not change our code, but instead have them come forward and receive consideration from the council because that's what the code reads. It says if the standard can't be met traditionally, then the council has the right to look at the site plan and approve the, the plan that they brought forward. So that's what's happened. Staff has looked at it, staff agrees. This did not go to P&amp;Z. This is a decision that comes directly to the council and gets decided by the council at one meeting. And I can make myself available for any questions you might have.
Any questions on the, the parking spaces? Councilmember Rizzo?
Yeah, Howard, just real quick, so it's going to be completely drive-through. I see this is a great amenity for the east side of Kyle right there as you're going on your commute to Austin. We are a commuting city. I see that as a great opportunity for them to be able to stop by, grab their coffee on their way to work. I, I've got no objection to approving this. I think it's a great idea. The only concern I have is if, you know, this building changes use when, if this coffee house leaves and we're, we're left with a drive-through building. I guess that's the only concern I have, but I, I think it's a great idea to have another coffee house there that'll keep them from having to commute over the bridge and just be able to get there and, and get into Austin quickly. So I think it's a good idea.
One of the first things I actually always think about is that the adaptive reuse of a building, when somebody comes in and wants a special consideration, are, are we creating a special building that won't be able to be used again? The, the expectation would be that anybody that moves in there with a new use would have to be complete and compliant before they were allowed to begin business operations. Anytime you get a change of use in any structure or a parcel that they have, they, they would then have to bring it up into modern day compliance. So it would be able to be used for a drive-through or takeaway service, even if Dutch Brothers were to leave, but if another restaurant were to try and move in there, if they for any reason wanted to have interior seating, they would have to have parking associated with the interior seating.
Councilmember Tobias?
When I was looking at the agenda, I saw coffee and right off the bat, I was like, all right, I can see this. Coffee rules, especially first thing in the morning. Yes, exactly, on that side of town, it'd be nice to have a coffee facility. And last month, when I took my TML conference courses, a lot of the new business models that are coming out are like this, the drive-through, drive-up. Look at Chick-fil-A, how they're dominating that market right now. And Taco Bell is, I believe, going to be starting to do that too as well. So like I always preach to everybody, you know, we're consumers every day, we're a consumer. And this model plan would fit in real well, especially on that side as we look forward. And if we ever have another business that decides to use that plan, I think we could fit in real well because again, that's the way it's looking for the future on that end. So all they're needing is I guess seven spots for their employees and walk-up customers. I don't see why we can go ahead and get that approved for them so that way they can get that coffee going.
Yeah, it looks like if, they, they're going to have seven total spaces, four of which would be reserved for employees and it reads three for customer parking.
Councilmember Ellison?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Certainly, no disrespect to Dunkin' Donuts right there. Councilmember Tobias? No, I, I think the comments that have been made have been strong comments about this. I think, you know, certainly love, businesses want to jump in there. I would love for somebody to jump in that old Polo tropical place. That would, that would be really great. But I think it's a, a good model, definitely pandemic-proof. And I think that is one of the things that has shown in our city with as much as people who didn't like the fast food in different places that are here, that has been a part of our area that has been strong and resilient throughout this town and kept our sales tax numbers strong. Howard, you know I bring this up probably anytime we talk about parking and you always shut me down, which is fine, about the, the maximum parking. And I know this particularly isn't an area that I would advocate, advocate for anyway, being on the interstate, but you and I have had conversations about maximum parking limits in the past and, and like I said, even I've brought it up on agenda items. Could you very briefly, very briefly kind of tell, remind me again why, why we're not quite there?
Why we're not where with regard to maximum parking?
Shifting from a minimum parking standard in our city to going to a maximum parking standard.
We have both. We actually have, we actually have both. We have our
Depending on the district, right?
Our standards are established in the zoning code. The traditional metric for minimum parking is usually predicated on floor area and then number of parking spaces. There are some specific uses that call out for either patrons or employees. So patrons can be things like restaurants and bars where we talked about the, the, the number of patrons that are allowed inside has a, a direct design on the number of parking spaces that are required outside. And as far as employees go, that's how we look at warehouse uses because if you were to do warehouse uses with square footage for parking, you would have parking that probably outsized the actual square footage of the warehouse inside. So they're, they're more predicated on how many employees they expect to have inside. But, so the, the minimum is traditional and then in the city of Kyle, the maximum is 150% of whatever the minimum is. So there is a, a number of parking spaces over which you cannot go and it's 100, it's 1.5 times the minimum number or 150% of the minimum number. And that's, that's just to make sure that we don't have areas that are busy two days a year, which would be probably Black Friday, would be pretty high parking at retail and I don't know, some President's Day or some other type of, you know, big Fourth of July sale or something like that. But on a random Tuesday in May, most of what we have in the city of Kyle is empty. Those parking spaces are not being consumed for the, the better part of the day. The retailers want as much parking as possible. They want to be able to demonstrate to folks that are driving by that they have plenty of free, available, safe, off-street parking whenever they want it, for whatever reason, whenever, wherever. Doesn't necessarily go along with the greatest aesthetic and you'll see that a lot more codes are moving towards parking that is required behind the building, parking that is required to be screened by shrubbery or other landscaping. Structured parking is a, is a new idea and sometimes putting parking underneath a building is, is another idea so that you can have more building on the same amount of, of area. The city of Kyle, we really look forward to folks that are going to get involved with the idea of the last 20% of their parking should be green, whether it's literally green with a product like Grasscrete or some of the other structured laminates that go in the ground that actually have soil and, and grass planted on them. But there is also a, a structure within that's usually some type of plastic or high-density polyethylene that creates enough strength that you can actually drive on it without causing ruts. Or getting into pervious pavement, which is basically just a really coarse aggregate that has a lot of holes in it and then underneath it would have storage. Usually there's some type of French drain, it's a huge hole filled with very large boulders. The boulders provide the structure for the concrete above, but the void space between the boulders can collect water that drops down and then it perks right into the soil beneath and goes back into the groundwater recharge. So I think about parking a lot. I've done a number of white papers in other jurisdictions where I've worked about parking and what to do with it and what to do about it. Kyle is pretty traditional for, you know, I would say a late eighties, you know, early type nineties parking standard for what they do with their, their retail and their other requirement metrics.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Did we have a motion on this one? Yeah? Not yet, okay. All right. I think Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Tobias brought up excellent points. I agree with you both on this. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Item 20 is written.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Rizzo. Any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Don't forget about Dunkin' Donuts.
Hey, I'm an officer, I know about them donuts, trust me. I know about them donuts.
Item 21, consider requests for subdivision waivers for proposed plat of Green Pastures. You are busy tonight, Howard.
Yeah, busy every day. So this is a request for the re-subdivision of a couple of lots that are located on Lilac Way in the Green Pasture subdivision. These are what the city of Kyle would term rural lots because they are outside of our corporate limit, but they are still within our ETJ. City of Kyle still has subdivision jurisdiction in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. So the, the history of this, I'll be brief. There were some properties where the, the land changed hands amongst private property owners, not necessarily done so with recorded documents or, or otherwise any instruments that were renderings. And now some of those folks have come forward with an expectation that they want to develop these properties in the county. And to develop them, they do not have wastewater available. And to develop them, they do not have wastewater available, so they will need onsite septic facilities, septic tanks. For the Hayes County Health Department to grant development permits for the creation of onsite septic facilities, the lots need to be recorded. The agreements that were made in the past were incongruent with the requirements that the city of Kyle has for rural subdivisions. Two of the major components are that they need to have 130 feet of frontage along the right-of-way and they need to exist in excess of one acre. So the existing conditions are on the screen right now. We've got Lot 2 and then Lot 3. That's three up here and then the remainder of this is two. The expectation that they've come forward with to make the most compliant lots that were available is to create these three lots on the screen. They would create, Lot 2 would be split into 2A and 2B and then Lot 3 would be up here. So lots 2A and 2B do not have adequate acreage. They need to be in excess of one acre and neither of them are. Additionally, Lot 2A does not have sufficient frontage. It has less than 100 feet of frontage when they are required to have 130. Lot 3A does have the acreage and the requirement, the ARC 135, and there's another, I think that's 100 there. So to create this compliant lot, they would have to create two non-compliant lots, which otherwise would not be allowable. So they've come forward with a request for a waiver from the city council and staff has looked at it and reviewed it and found that it's the best of a bad condition. We have found zero expected detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of any of the properties that are out there and have recommended that this be approved as drawn in front of the seat.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Does Lot 2B and Lot 2A have the same or different owners?
Currently, or they're proposed to be, let's see, trying to find the owner's block. Let's see, the application, request letter. Let's see if I can find out who the... This reads, this is by the land surveyor is the applicant. It says, "On behalf of all the owners involved." I don't have that information on how many current owners there are or how many future owners there will be.
And did you say they were going to try to develop these?
Put homes on them, single-family homes.
On each? Like one on 2A and one on 2B?
I don't know that, we don't regulate how many homes they're allowed to build on them. They'll only be limited by their ability to provide septic. So we don't, we don't have anything to say about the number of dwelling units. That's a zoning condition and there's no zoning in the ETJ. All we can do is require a minimum metric of design standard. In this case, it's frontage along the right-of-way and total acreage.
So if we said yes, they could have less than an acre, then each plot owner could put as many homes as they want on there?
No. So if you said yes tonight, two lots will have less than an acre. Lot 2B will be nine one-hundredths of an acre short of being a full acre. Lot 2A would be half an acre, so it would be one-half an acre short. Lot 3A is in excess of an acre. They are now and would be after your action irrespective of what your action is. They are allowed to place as many dwelling units as they can reasonably service with water service and wastewater service. So they can, they could place as many homes as as big as the tile field they can build, whatever Hayes County Health Department says that they can service.
But if we say no, how will that affect them?
I would expect they would have to create congruent lots with the city of Kyle's development standards, our subdivision regulations. It would appear as though they have adequate acreage for two lots because it seems like they just have, that's one, they have 2.43, it looks somewhere in that neighborhood of total acreage, 2. maybe 4.4. So that's non-standard for them to have three full lots if they would need at least an acre per lot. As far as frontage goes, they have 200, 300, 400, 500. So I think that they would have enough lot frontage to be able to create three, but they don't, they don't have requisite acreage. And I think really what the problem is, is the sale of these properties, the expectation that folks were buying something with a, that had an opportunity to be developed later on with onsite septic.
Okay, so if this is proposed that we're looking at, who, how is it currently set up? Because this is what they want to look like, correct?
This is what it looks like today.
Lot, okay, so it looks like Lot 2 is one. So there's Lot 2, Lot 3. Where's Lot 1?
There, there is no Lot 1 in this. Lot 1 would be probably off of this. This is the, this is a portion of Green Pasture Section 2 Block R. They're only looking at lots 2 and 3 of Green Pasture Section 2 Block R. They're looking to create three lots out of what was formerly two because again, at some point in the past, someone sold land to someone else and now they need to consummate that sale by being able to record the boundaries of what was sold so that they can get more permits from the county.
So none of those deeds are recorded to show two separate lands, like a Lot 2A and Lot 2B just shows Lot 2?
I'm, I'm, I can't tell you what deeds there are. My expectation was a lot of the history of the properties that are out here are handshake agreements where cash changes hands and there's an expectation among all those that were a part of the deal that the property has changed ownership. But I don't know that there were any recorded deeds or any renderings like this subdivision plat until now.
So, so essentially they want the city to take care of that instead of trying to figure out their recordings on their own? Well, there is none. Well, right now there is. There's one that just says 2 and 3. That's what it says, correct?
That's right.
And they want it to be 2A and 2B?
The official subdivision plat that was done at some point in the past looked, looked like this. And at some point, the owners of these or the operators of these, as the case may be, entered into agreement with some person and land was purchased. The only reason they need action from the city of Kyle is because they want to go to Hayes County and have onsite septic facilities installed. The county will not issue a development permit unless the land is drawn and recorded at the county tax office and that was never done. And so now they're looking to do that now. They have to go through the county because it's, they have to go through the city of Kyle because it is, it's our jurisdiction. And so that's, they've come to us today because the request they're making is non-compliant with our current code. So they're, they're looking for a waiver from the city council to allow what is actually happening in the field to be recorded at the county tax office. There are some deed references on here. You can see that some of these notes on here relate to these deed reference notes here. So when you ask how many property owners are involved, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, there's nine property owners that are listed right there as notes to some of these drawings. Not all of them are party to the request tonight, though.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, Howard, thank you. Thank you for the explanation, but yeah, I'm pretty familiar with the area. I know that a lot of the area out there was done in just, you know, handshake. I know there's a lot of mobile homes that were sold out there as well with the expectation of lots. I know that there's been some abandoned lots out there as well where other people have come in and incorporated them and have, have taken over. So I, I understand the mess up up there. It's tough up in that area. I know a lot of the families there, but I know this is probably something happening with the handshake and now there, there's someone out there that wants to get it, do it right and get his land plotted and get the septic in and I think I'm okay with this. I'll be okay with approving this, definitely, just to make sure this family is allowed to continue with their plans on their property.
The minimum lot size requirement, as I understand it from the Hayes County Health Department, for septic facilities is one-half of an acre. However, with advanced septic facilities, you can get down to 20,000 square feet, which is, you know, just a little bit less than half of an acre. But the city of Kyle still has the one-acre standard because the expectation would be that it would still be traditional septic with a, with a tile field outfall. And for that reason, you wouldn't want that to cross, cross property lines. So you want that to be able to be constructed entirely with on-ground lot. But the, the county will be able to move forward with all three of these lots as they're designed here if the city of Kyle is willing to allow it to be recorded.
Thank you, Howard.
Any other questions on this item? Can I get a motion?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve action item-
21.
21, sorry.
Second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, a second by Councilmember Tobias to approve item 21 as written. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. Okay, item number 22. I do believe that this item is going to be postponed until the December 1st meeting because we're still waiting on the agreement. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you don't mind, we'll just go ahead and postpone this one to the next Item 23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with third-party building inspectors and plan reviewers and approving a form of contract. Howard?
Yes, this is basically a third-party service agreement between the city of Kyle, specifically it's going to be in the building department with private sector building inspectors and plan review, plan reviewers. It's two parts, one of which will be a contract for services and that's basically a pre-qualification that goes along with all of these private sector third-party companies. And then later on, as on-demand services are required of the department, we would issue task orders to the companies to go out and perform building inspections and on occasion building plans review so that building permits can be issued for new projects that come into the city. With the elasticity of the building right now and especially the volume that we've had this year, through the first 10 months of 2020, we've had 1,162 new single-family home permits let. That's, that's just the ones that have been let from January 1 to October 30 and we've still got eight weeks to go. So we feel the crunch a lot and it's causing delays and if we are able to capture some of that overage of service that we're able to provide and be a little more elastic in our response, we would be able to use these third parties, which would be a big help to us. The reason it's come to you is because these agreements always need to come to council. We already have one in place and that's with a company called ATS. And up till now, being able to farm out some of our work to ATS has been very helpful, very useful, but we're seeing a ramp up in work and a little bit of a ramp down in the volume of staff that we have available for the work. So we're asking of you to allow us to enter into additional deals with more third-party
Any questions on this item? Councilmember Rizzo.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Rizzo for the record. Howard, just what's the vetting process for these companies?
So it's spelled out in the agreement as well, but they all need to have the same qualifications as they would if they were city of Kyle employees. So they need to be, they need to have Texas plumbing license, which honestly is the most difficult credential to find in the state of Texas. And beyond that, they need to be ICC certified for whatever discipline that they're looking at. So residential, any of the componentry, being mechanical, electric, plumbing, framing, that type of thing. And if they're looking at commercial projects, then they need to have ICC building inspection for commercial projects.
Thank you, Howard. I just wanted the explanation out to the public. Appreciate it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number 23.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem, a second by Councilmember Bradshaw. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Howard.
Glad to help.
Item number 24, discussion of possible action to issue a request for qualifications for owner's representative for the Kyle Public Safety Center. Scott, this is your item.
All right. Council, at the last TERZ board meeting a week ago, we had discussed using an owner's rep for a couple of the projects that are going to be constructed within the TERZ boundary. At the time, we discussed having the Public Safety Center as part of the overall project scope of the owner's rep and that we would draft that into an RFQ. We're still going to draft that RFQ with, with Public Safety Center if that's the direction of council. However, we do have several choices as we move forward with the, the construction of the Public Safety Center for some sort of a project manager or owner's rep. The, the Public Safety Center was designed as a construction manager at risk or CMAR project, whereas the two large parks in the uptown area are design-build projects. So by nature, design-build probably needs a little bit more oversight from an owner's rep. CMAR, not so much as that's, that's really built into that overall project fee. So even though we're asking for your approval to jump into the RFQ with the TERZ board, when we come back for final recommendation, we may have some other options for you. Either go with the owner's rep or go with another PM directly for this project or leave it up to the CMAR team, which is Barlett Cock and PGAL through Construction Administration.
Any questions? Make a motion to approve item number 24.
Second it.
Motion by Mayor Protem-Coch, I have a second by Councilmember Tobias. Any further discussion? Are we just stuck on Howard's face on this meeting?
Let's be more than racist.
I think they're seeing something different than we are. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 25, an ordinance of the city of Kyle amending, the city of Kyle ordinances amending Article 2 Water and Wastewater System.
Mayor and council, page signed, city attorney for the record. This item is coming back to you for second reading. It was passed by 7-0 in the first reading. The reason it was brought back is because council directed staff to come up with a policy for implementation of this ordinance. What this ordinance does is it gives the city council a tool to use in collection of delinquent utility bills. This state law allows a city to impose a lien for delinquent utility bills under certain circumstances, but in order to use this tool, you have to adopt an ordinance that authorizes it. As we discussed before, there are several exceptions for when a lien can be filed against a property. A lien cannot be filed against a property that is homestead- A lien cannot be filed against a property that is homestead, that has a homestead exemption. It can't be filed against a property that, um, is connected in a tenant's name after, after the city's been given notice that it's a rental property. And so those are a couple of the examples of where it wouldn't be allowed. The city, uh, staff provided a policy for the council's consideration to, to further guide implementation of this, um, this ordinance, and that, that's been provided to you previously. We can go over that as well if, if we need to. The policy is not incorporated in the ordinance itself. It's a separate policy that would guide the departments in use of this, this ordinance. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Paige. I want to thank staff for working on the, uh, policy. It is a last resort, uh, for collection, so I, I'm glad that we're using it as a last resort, um, cause I know sometimes families can get, you know, due to health concerns or right now they're in a pandemic jobless, we're, um, not gonna, you know, uh, send them, you know, put a lien on their home right away. It's gonna be a last resort measure, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that. So thank you all for working on that. Perez, if you're out there, thank you, and thank you as well, Paige. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. Any, uh, other comments, questions? Councilmember, uh, Floris K.
I see number four says that homesteads and then tenants, it doesn't apply to those guys. So my question is, why can't we just create an ordinance strictly for whoever it's, it's gonna apply to?
The reason it's drafted this way, it's, the statute is written in a way where it just has a list of excluded entities as opposed to defining who all could be subject to it. It defi, it defines who's excluded from it. So it's easier to draft an ordinance that follows what the state law says. If we have to do the opposite and try to figure out the range of other entities that could be subject to the ordinance, we might miss something. Uh, what's very important for us to do is to make sure we also have that list of exclusion specifically in the ordinance, so we don't capture somebody who's, who's, against whom we can't file this lien. So it's a little easier for the, for us, for the staff to implement it if we have it defined as who can't, who can't be, have a lien filed against them.
Okay, I guess my fear is, once we apply this ordinance and we're all off the dais, say in five years, nobody's here, and then, and that city council decides they're gonna change this ordinance that we created, that it might be applicable to tenants or somebody else. I never want to see that. I never want to see somebody who's fi, I mean, our water bill is not like our food bill where we can skim. People need water, people need wastewater. It's not really a bill people want to skip. So my fear is, if somebody, a renter or somebody down the line gets into a financial situation where they can't pay their bill, is it possible for a current council in the future to change this ordinance?
They, and council can always change an ordinance. The problem will be, if they adopt an ordinance that's, doesn't follow what the law says, it's not, it can't be enforced without, I mean, it can't, it should not be enforced, but if you enforce it, then it's going to, you're gonna have someone challenge that. It just not won't be effective. It's easily challenged. And you, you, as this, the city has excellent professional staff that watches these things and, and make sure these are in compliance. As you grow, you develop more and more staff that can help with these issues. And so by you building, um, that infrastructure, you have staff that will also alert you whether there's, would alert the council that there's limitations on changing that ordinance, so that that's not something they can do and it be enforced.
I understand. I do work in the legal field and I've seen several occasions where people bring lawsuits that are frivolous and, and not real. So, but you still have to pay an attorney or you still have to show up to court. And although you may say this isn't legal, that's not to say that another council member or dais might think otherwise, do something that they're not supposed to do, and now these people may be, even if it's just one person, suck with the, suck with the, going to court and getting an attorney and, and finding out that, cause to be fair, my home when I purchased, it was a foreclosure and it had, it wasn't where we start, but it had a lien on it, which in of itself was illegal and we got it removed, but we had to have a long process. So I can, I understand what you're saying as far as you're not supposed to, but I also seen firsthand that that can happen anyways.
I mean, if future council can, can't control what they will do ultimately, other than advising them, so.
That's what I'm trying to like avoid and to take into consideration before we make a vote to put this ordinance effective or not. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just on the, the issue of the tenant, like for an apartment complex, if you think of that, if you have an apartment complex where each individual tenant has to set up their, their account, then that's also a signal to the city that, you know, that, that there's a property owner and then the tenants are responsible for their, their bills. And the statutes don't hold the property owner accountable for those individual tenants not paying the bills in that circumstance.
What if it's an LLC that, you know, rents from another LLC? I know there are several businesses that create their own separate entity and then they rent to themselves.
That, that's something that would have to be reviewed on each individual case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rizzo.
And it, um, the, uh, the entities that we excluded was, there's state law that we can't, uh, put liens on them, correct?
Correct.
So there is a state law in place already.
Correct.
Thank you, Paige.
Yes, thank you, Paige, for helping us tackle this problem, uh, that came before us. I think we've done the best that we've, we can on this. Uh, does anybody else have anything else to add?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by the mayor, a second by Councilmember Rizzo. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. I'm gonna go ahead and ask, uh, before we do these last two items, if you would mind if we take a, um, six-minute recess and come back here at nine, 10. Would that be okay? Okay, we are at recess.
Where's the water?
Okay, uh, we are gonna go ahead and reconvene out of recess. Just make sure that we have, uh, the mayor is there, and I know Councilmember Dex is about to join. Um, let's go into item number twenty-six. General discussion and possible action to establish Proposition B Parks Public Engagement Process and Timeline. Mayor Travis Mitchell, this is your item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, so, uh, ultimately, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk for about two minutes, and then I'm gonna make a recommendation that we actually postpone this item, uh, until we get a little further along in this process. But, uh, the, the primary reason for bringing it forward is, as, as we all know and have discussed, Proposition B passed, which outlines, uh, park improvements throughout the city. And, uh, it certainly is, uh, incumbent upon this council, I think, to go ahead and start, uh, establishing some processes, uh, both from the standpoint of public engagement and from the, uh, professional development and project management side, uh, to make sure that we begin the work of delivering these projects, which obviously is gonna take some time. Uh, I, I've had, uh, some thoughts about what that public engagement process might look like, uh, but I'm, uh, thinking that we probably could, could stand to, to still wait just a little bit longer, uh, until such a time as, um, we, we all have, uh, had a chance to really, I think, process this. Uh, I, I don't really have an exact outline of what those, uh, processes might look like, but I was curious to hear from, uh, just as an FYI, the, the Parks Director and the city managers, uh, as, you know, from the standpoint of the, the boards and commissions that we have in place and how we might want to utilize them. Uh, and then also what staff in particular thinks about, uh, what these project timelines could and, and perhaps even should look like, so that we can be more transparent with the, with the public. But obviously, I'm here at my house, which means I haven't had the opportunity to engage with staff, uh, very much, uh, this week or, or last week, uh, due to some challenges that I'm having, being able to interact with, uh, folks right now. But, uh, hopefully that would go away soon, and we're not in a terrible rush, uh, to kick this off. So if you would like to wait until such a time as, uh, we've, we can have more discussions with staff about, uh, what those processes might look like, uh, that would be fine by me, uh, or we can discuss and try to lay out some stuff right now.
I am fine with waiting mayor on this and giving everybody a little bit more time to, to kind of think about it. I think this kind of opens up the, uh, process for thought. I'd love to hear what, um, Mr. Sellers and, uh, the Parks Director, uh, would have to say on this. This is obviously a, a big deal for us to have these, uh, bonds, uh, passed for the parks. It's something that, uh, I know the council is excited about to see these improvements to a lot of our current parks. But I can go ahead and, uh, I'm amenable to waiting on that as well.
Thank you. I think we just need to have some more conversations with, uh, with other parties like the county, for example, um, before we, uh, start that public process, cause we need to iron out some details first.
Okay, Scott, do you want to get this put on the, the December first agenda, or do we think we need a little bit longer?
We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about this. Let's, we'll put it on the agenda that makes sense. Hopefully December, sorry about that. Hopefully December first makes sense to do that, but we'll, we'll make sure we, we schedule it when we have a little bit more information.
Okay. All right. Item is postponed. Item twenty-seven, uh, consider and possible action to engage Honeywell International, Inc. in the amount of $29,000 for infrastructure investment within the city of Kyle. Uh, Councilmember Rizzo, this is your item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We brought a quick presentation, uh, from Honeywell just to, uh, see where our study's gonna go and what we're looking for. Uh, one of the things I want to keep in mind is that, uh, you know, some of, this, this is an item that I, I'm a little passionate about because I believe that we're moving into the future as we're growing. I think about the core values, uh, knowledge, yes, attitude, leading edge, that's the biggest one, employee accountability is one, but leading edge is what really comes to mind when I start thinking about where we are in our metering system. I think we're a little behind the curve. I think we can do a little better. Just as, uh, you know, Purnell's Electric showed us, everything that they do is now, uh, remote. There's no longer, uh, unless there's, you know, something going on with the system, uh, is remote, and I think we can get to that ability as well. When I'm around Austin, I look at the water meters, readers still going around, it's now a corporate, uh, company that's coming out, uh, subsidy of, of another company, and I keep thinking what the cost for the residents in Austin is for that. And I'm, I'm trying to be proactive and ahead of the game when it comes to Kyle, so that we can be leading edge, we could be leading Austin and, uh, led, showing them the way to, uh, better, um, mitigate our water loss and how to read our meters and, uh, as far as billing as well. So with that, I, I turn it up to, uh, Miss, uh, Lu, uh, Mr.
Luis Montes.
Luis Montes, sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. It's, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for having us on the agenda. So, uh, definitely, uh, this is a great opportunity for the city. What, what we have on the agenda is the, the, the ability for us to validate the preliminary findings that we talked about some time ago. Uh, just to give you a quick highlight, I know we have some new council members in, in the, uh, in the city hall today with us. So just a couple of highlights. Um, we ran a preliminary study earlier this year, and we found that, um, the city currently consumes about one billion, over one billion gallons of water on a yearly basis, but out of that billion, uh, gallons of annual water use, about 14% of that is actually water loss. So that equals to about 136 million gallons of water loss for the city. That's water loss, that's revenue loss. Um, so the purpose of the test, uh, that, that we're talking about on the agenda today is to validate the results of our findings, right? So, uh, the test is gonna be done by a third-party independent organization. They're gonna basically, uh, look at the sample pool of the infrastructure that we're looking at, uh, pull some of those meters and test them at, at different flow ranges to, to validate the accuracy of the infrastructure, and that will confirm some of ours, that's gonna be able to confirm our findings and really let us know the specific, the specifics of the water loss and, um, the, the accuracy of the water meters themselves, right? So, so the information that we gathered and the preliminary studies were gathered from several data points. Some of them, uh, were coming from a city audits, uh, done by the Texas Water Development Board. Uh, the data sets, so we're going back to 2013 all the way through 2019. So that's information that, that we've provided to the city. And in that information, like I said, um, it shows that the city has considerably, um, lost revenue and, and, uh, year over year for, for a total, like I mentioned, 136 million gallons. So moving forward with this, with this test, it would allow us to validate that information, and then with that, we would be able to move forward to the, to the next phase and look at, um, really putting together a plan in place to mitigate a lot of those, uh, losses for the city and put the city in, in a, on a roadmap to not only, um, upgrade the water metering infrastructure, but also put technology in place that will also bring efficiency on the operation maintenance for the city and also eliminate a lot of, um, loss of resources, of loss of water. And it also, in addition, the biggest bonus is result in, uh, water, um, revenue, uh, revenue, uh, additional revenue for the city. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. It's the first time that we're all here in live and in action, so I'm a little nervous, I'm not gonna lie. Um, but, uh, going back to some of the findings, uh, based on, on our assessment, uh, the only piece of the city's infrastructure that's actually doing well is the commercial site. And the only reason why is because most of that, that infrastructure is, is new. A lot of those businesses are new within the first five years. So our study, uh, and our, and our assessment determined that a lot of that infrastructure that's older than five years, uh, crosses a threshold where the accuracy of the meters actually starts to decline. And because of that, the, the city, uh, experiences, uh, a loss in that, in revenue because the water meters do not count or calculate the water effectively. So after the meter starts that decline, it goes from 95% accuracy and slowly gradually goes down and down and down, right? Um, it, it's not the case with all the water meters, right? I'm not gonna say that every water meter in the city goes, you know, on a slope decline, but the, the test that we're proposing will allow us to see where the infrastructure actually lies. It would actually tell us where the, the water meters lie. If you guys turn to the water meter matrix, I'd actually give you a great example of what I'm talking about. It's one of the documents that I put together in our presentation, and I think it's probably gonna be the most important document that, that we, that we, uh, talk about today. So if you guys, um, look at the document, you will see that we've, um, put together a matrix based on water meter sizes and ages, based on the data that was presented to us during the preliminary assessment. Uh, what you will find is that a lot of the infrastructure that the city has is actually or older than five years. And that's not just residential, that's commercial and multifamily, okay? Because of this, we see that the city is experiencing a great deal of inaccuracy in how much water is counted. And, uh, with the help of the study, we will specifically determine how much of that accuracy, uh, the city's actually lost from, um, you know, whenever the, the water meter was, uh, set till today, right? Um, and based on our analysis of the data and the information that we've collected from the city. And based on our analysis of the data and the information that we've collected from the city, we believe that by moving forward and doing the assessment, it will return the information that we're expecting, that it will show that there's a huge inaccuracy in the water metering infrastructure. And with that, it will allow us to put a plan in place to move forward with a infrastructure upgrade for the water meter system for the city in addition to an AMI system that allow for electronic two-way communication between the the water meter infrastructure so that the water meters will automatically read and submit the information to billing. So that will expedite a lot, a lot of processes as well and eliminate a lot of resources or it will create efficiencies in the current resources of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Let me just, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what the $29,000 is for. Now, Honeywell did a study for us.
Correct.
That you presented a couple of months ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then the $29,000 that you're proposing is for, it says, infrastructure investment.
Correct.
But you're saying you're going to validate the study that you presented to make sure that those numbers match up? Or what is the, what are you validating or what is this new study?
So the study itself, it's it's a water meter test, basically. So the water meter test will specifically let us know what the accuracy of the existing water meter infrastructure for the city looks like.
So you're going to send a third party out to do these tests?
Correct.
Okay, and then they're going to let us know the accuracy and how much money, how much water we're actually losing?
Correct.
How big is the sample size?
The sample size, Scott, would you like to help me?
Sure. Hello, everybody. I'm I'm Scott Cohen. I work for Aquometric. We're the meter distributor. We've been installing all meters for over a decade now. We have a separate division that does meter testing that'll, if we're lucky, you know, if if we get the opportunity, we'll we'll do the project. The sample size is 35 meters. And so the way that works is the meter, my coworker Jeremy Langcon is on the call as well. He manages the meter services division, so if you have any detailed questions, he'd be happy to answer those for you. But basically, the way it works is the, our crew will work with Honeywell and the city to pick a random sample of the meters that are over five years and older. From there, the meter crews will pull those and replace them with the type of meter that you that the city's been buying. They send those off to an independent third party to test them. It's up in Waxahachie. And they do a low, medium, and high flow test. And that'll tell you the accuracy. And so essentially what we're doing is we're trying to get a random, we're trying to get random sampling of all the meters in the system and find out what the accuracy level is because then you could kind of figure out how much money you're losing based off of that representative sample.
So you're going to take a random sample of 35 of our current meters.
Yes, sir.
That are around the town. Are you going from one area of the city limits to another? Like, how is it randomized?
Well, we'll identify, we'll start with the meters that are five years or older. And Honeywell will work out the details of the meters that are that are sampled. But it's my understanding that it'll be a collaborative effort with, you know, the 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 goal is to get a truly representative, a good sample. And so we want to work with the city to identify a truly random sampling. You know, we don't want to cherry pick one way or the other. And so we'll work with the city staff to pick a, you know, a really random sample and pull those and test them.
Okay, so work with the city, 35 meters, test them, verify what the loss is actually at.
Yes, sir.
And then you guys are going to conduct the study to tell us what after that? What kind of meters to put in place of those?
Well, that that we've already been in discussions with Mr. Scott Sellers and Mr. Robert Rizzo about the recommendations when it comes to the technology. And that would be going from a, you guys currently have a, what we call a mechanical meter where it has a impeller that, you know, turns and meters the water. We will go into an electromagnetic meter which has no moving parts. So going from from what you guys currently have to the new meter would actually really radically elevate the accuracy of how much water you guys, how much water is actually used by the residents. And also allow us to put you guys in a position where you can also do leak, leak mitigation, find leaks throughout the system and be able to really have a great sense of where your infrastructure is. And going forward, it will also increase the revenue because obviously it would mitigate leaks and also the accuracy would allow you to increase the revenue by counting the actual amount of water that's actually being used by the residents.
Scott, I'm going to need you to to weigh in here on our meters. I don't know who are person of expertises on staff that could talk about the meters. But, you know, I just want to know where we're at with the current meters that we use versus the proposed upgrades to these other meters because I know there's been talk of if we get this study and we do this, that there are certain things that we can do in-house to help save some money. But what at the end of the day are we really talking about? Is it just a big price difference from the current meters that we use now to these, you know, very efficient meters that, you know, what is it, what is the cost associated with those? What would that look like citywide? What's actually feasible on our end? Because my concern is that we're going to get this study and if it doesn't have any real value to us that we can use on our own, I don't want us to waste money on a study that we won't use. So I'm looking for a way for this study to be of value to us even without anything, any future deals with Honeywell. But that it actually brings value for the city can use if we want to save money and do it in-house.
Everyone turns. Scott Sellers for the record. So what we have right now is a system called Advanced Meter Reading, AMR. And it is a drive-through-the-city system where the truck picks up the signal from each of our meters. We've had that system for for quite some time. And some of those meters do have, you know, issues with accuracy. I don't know how many. The study would tell us more. But the the big issue with AMR is that it is a once-a-month system. So our our big issue is when a customer has a leak, we don't find out about it for 30 days. And sometimes we send our our meter readers back out into the city a couple of times because they miss reads, et cetera. What we would like to move to and what some of our meters are already capable of doing is something called AMI, which is Automated Metering Infrastructure. That allows different antennas to be placed throughout the city. And I believe the study will look at the propagation report of where those antennas need to be. Those meters that I believe are within five years old or, you know, roughly that have that dual antenna on it already could ping those antennas and come right back to the City Hall. And every minute, you can set it to different time intervals, but every minute, those meters will ping back to the City Hall. If there's some sort of abnormal reading, we'll find out about it and immediately be, you know, be able to address it. That's something that we've wanted to do for a while. And luckily, with the meters that we have been purchasing for the last several years, we have that capability. But we don't have the antenna infrastructure to do so. What we would like to know ultimately is where those antennas need to go. And then how many of our meters are too old where they either don't have that second register for or the antenna to ping the the towers or those that have internal systems that are too old where the the water loss that Luis is talking about may be more of a factor, right? So the new meters have a totally different way of of reading down to the, yeah, yeah, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, if I don't, if you don't mind interrupting, I can give you a little more detail about the different types of meters. And so the meter that you all been buying is called the SR2. It's a, it's a fine meter. It works great. People love it. It's a positive displacement meter. That technology's been around forever for a very long time. Essentially, the way it works, and I won't get too deep into the weeds here, but there's a metal pole and cups attached to like something spins around in the, on the pole. And there's a, the water goes this way and the water fills up a cup and it spins. And then it fills up a cup and it spins. It fills up, and every time it spins, it has a little odometer that it's going. It's not really odometer anymore. It's all digital, but that's essentially how it works. And so that's all brass and steel and just different types of metal that's in a water column. And unless something crazy happens, it's submerging water for the entire life of the meter, 20, 30 years, whatever. And it's just metal, metal contact in water. And so what happens is over time, it just becomes less precise, so they slow down. And as they slow down, they are less accurate and the billing, the amount of water that gets read goes down. So the new meter, the Eye Pearl, which is the one that Honeywell's proposing to use, is an electromagnetic residential meter. And so what that means is, is there's no moving parts in the meter. It's a flow tube like this and there's electrodes on each side. And what it's doing is it's measuring the velocity of the part of particles that go through, that go through the flow tube. That's a huge gross simplification. That's essentially how it works. The weird thing about that is there's nothing to degrade. There's no moving parts. And so we, Census actually warranties that meter, new meter accuracy, new meter accurate for 20 years. And so the meters that you've been buying and one of the reasons why they start, why the Honeywell's proposing it five years is a traditional PD meter is only new meter accurate for the first five years. And that's 98.5% to 101.5% of accuracy. After that, it goes down every year. And that's what, that's what the AWAA standard is. They assume that's how the meters are going to operate. Again, the Eye Pearl, the one that Honeywell's proposing, new meter accurate for 20 years. Additionally, because it's a more precise meter, it has a larger flow range. And so it's going to capture more water. The PD, a brand-new PD meter takes about a quart of water for it to start spinning. And so if you imagine, you know, you get a glass of water out of your sink, a little bit of water goes down. If it's not a quart of water, it doesn't get, it doesn't get captured. The Eye Pearl, it's about two shot glasses worth of water. And so if two shot glasses of water go through, it starts capturing that. That's great for the city to have more accurate counting of the water because the city's paying for water. You know, you're pumping it, there's, I know that, I believe you all have reservoirs where you get your water from, but you're still paying pumping costs. You're still paying to pump the water from where the water source is to the, to the, to the customer. And so it lets you track that better. Also, it allows you to notify your customers better. There's continuous, we hesitate to call it a leak alarm because it could be a lot of different things. It could be, there could be continuous flow. You know, if there's elderly population and they have a toilet flapper that's leaking, that they might not hear it. It might be running just a tiny little bit. With the new meter, you're going to capture that quicker and you're going to know about it right away via the AMI system. And so essentially, it's just a more accurate meter. The Eye Pearl, which is why, the SR2 is a good meter, you know, it's, but the Eye Pearl is just a more accurate, more advanced meter. And the warranty is better on that meter as well.
And Mayor Protem, and based based on our analysis of the data that we gathered from the Water Development Board, currently, the the city's current infrastructure lies, so he mentioned five years and older, he started the degrading process. About 63% of the city's infrastructure currently is over five years. 29% of that is over 15 years. So with that in mind, we believe that if if the city were to push for an upgrade of the entire, or not of that older infrastructure, you would see a very good increase in revenue. Based on our information, year over year, the city's actually, the city's metered gallon, gallon, water gallon count has actually been decreasing even though there's more residents moving into the city and more water meters actually, or more water meters actually being added into the infrastructure. So even though there's more people moving in, the count of water that you guys have is actually coming down. So that tells us that there's a huge inaccuracy in the accuracy of the meters themselves within the infrastructure.
How just, Council, Mayor Mitchell?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for for staff. Probably Harper, I think, would be the best one. Harper, are you, you on the line?
I think he's on. Is he muted?
He's in the chat, yeah.
He's connected, he's just muted.
We probably put him to sleep. Luis, I want to make sure I heard what you said correctly. You said that our water loss is growing at a faster rate than new development is producing.
Yeah, so what I, what I, to say that again. So year over year, you guys are adding more, more people, more, more houses, more residences into the city. So even though there's an increase in additional residents into the city, the actual amount of water that the city's counting or metering is actually going down. And that's specific for multifamily usage and residential usage. So we've seen year over year from, for example, in the multifamily, and these are apartment buildings, year over year, you guys have been experiencing a water loss of 30 million in 2018 and about 40 million gallons in 2019. Even though that, even though the water, the multifamily residences have actually increased from 10 apartment buildings to 20 apartment buildings in 2018 and to 25 apartment buildings in 2019. So even though there is more apartment buildings, the actual amount of water that was metered actually went down year over year. So that tells us that there's a huge inaccuracy when it comes to the water meters for the multifamily infrastructure. And then the same can be seen.
Well, now, I definitely want Harper on the line because that's a, that's pretty dramatic. I'm not sure that, Scott, have you texted him?
And this was data that was gathered from the Water, Texas Water Development Board. This is a data that the city puts together in an audit that they they create for the Water Development Board and submits to the state agency. And that's information.
So you're saying in in multifamily, we had 10, based on what you were saying, we had 10 apartment complexes producing a certain amount of water and we now have 20 and the 20 combined are producing less water than the 10 were originally?
Correct.
Or using less water than the 10?
Correct. And the same, the same is evident in the residential water meters as well. So year over year, you guys, the city went from 9,100 residences to 9,300 from 2018 to 2019. However, the gallons that were metered went from 601 million down to 597 million in 2019.
And you're attributing that to water loss, not changing behaviors or weather?
So this, this would be specifically information coming from the water meter billing data and also from the Water Development Board. So we analyzed.
Well, no, I, I understand, but you're drawing the conclusion, you're saying we increased the number of units and we decreased the total demand on the system. And the implication is that that is a result of water loss. I'm just trying to understand that because if you said, if we went from 9,100 residents to 93, which is just a couple percentages of increase in one year, and then we decreased our usage by a couple percentages, that's possible, certainly. I I don't think 10 to 20, I don't think if we double our population, our water usage goes down. So I'd have to understand what you're talking about there. But I'm trying to understand how you're attributing all that to water loss.
Well, that's, that's what the the testing is for, that that's why we want to do the the test itself so that we can determine that that loss is attributed to the accuracy of the water meters.
I think we have Harper.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add just one, one more thing, just to add more context to the conversation. You know, there's real, there's real losses and there's also apparent losses. And so apparent losses are, you know, real losses are water that goes, that's, is a leak or isn't being read because the meter is not accurate enough. But there's also apparent losses that come from inefficiencies in the system due to having, you know, a, a less efficient system, you know, a drive-by system that the guys are having to get reads several times, there could be billing issues. And one of the things that the proposed AMI system does is streamlines all that. Makes it so, you know, rather than, you know, have to spend two weeks getting reads and rereads, it's done at once. And then anything that's not read, you can see right away and turn in a work order to fix it. Any sort of billing issue is going to get flagged right away. And so there are apparent losses that tend to grow pretty fast when cities grow as well. Just to add a bit more context to where that discrepancy might be coming from.
Harper, you want, are you there, Harper?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'm here. I I didn't catch all of it. I apologize. I didn't catch all of it. But I know y'all are talking about the water loss. And was there a specific on the water loss that you got a question?
Yeah, I, so our typically, you know, our meters are regulated in terms of how much, you know, in terms of the efficiency that they must produce. And we have internal controls for what we're looking for before replacement. Can you walk us through the efficiency of? Can you walk us through the efficiency of our current metering system and what we do when we find a meter that is out, outside of that? Do we send it off for inspection? Do we replace it?
So the majority of all of our meters that we've ever sent off have come back within that, that parameter. Um it, it, I forget what the exact number is that it goes down to, but all of them have come back within that parameter, I believe, off the top of my head.
I think it was ninety seven, ninety seven percent from what I remember at the last discussion. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I couldn't remember if it was ninety eight or not, so I didn't want to give a number.
So, but when you say the majority, do you mean, you know, if you send ten off, six are good? And four are faulty?
If we send ten off, ten were coming back good. So our, we haven't, we haven't seen the, we haven't seen the failing of our meters as what was predicted. And, and just to be open, we did have that discussion with them and told them that we had a little bit of discrepancy with some of the water loss numbers that they were providing. I haven't been in on the conversations as of recent to see if that's been fine tuned or not. So I can't speak to that. But the original numbers that they gave, we did have some, some, uh, some questions about that.
What, what triggers an, um, a, a review of a meter, having you pull it out and send it off for inspection?
So typically what's done, and the meter reader, the meter reading is under the utility billing. So the meter readers are with them, but when they were with us, and I believe it still follows the same fashion. Um if let's say a homeowner or customer, you know, has a complaint, they say, man, my bill is suddenly really high. Um I don't know why, I haven't done anything different, dah 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 dah. Um staff will go over there and look at it. Um they'll maybe even pull the meter, make sure that there's no kind of debris or particle or anything in there. Then they will tell that customer, if you would like, we will be happy to send this off and have it tested. And Pervez may need to correct me on how they're doing it now. But I believe if it came back within that percentage, then the customer had to pay for that. So that's the way.
Don't charge the customer any money. Harper, can you speak to the Johnson Control Study that y'all do on meter testing?
Yes, that, that, um, that study's been, I think it was a fifteen year study. Um, the, all of the meters that I saw during that study came back good. Typically, when a meter fails, uh or when, you know, you go and test it. The meter would fail to the advantage of the homeowner. In other words, it won't read as much. So more volume is going through the meter to the, to the residents that's not being billed.
That's water, that's water loss, yes.
Yes, versus being over billed. That doesn't, that doesn't typically ever happen with, with what we have seen with our meters.
So the, the question is, you know, if, if the reason you're replacing these meters or checking the meters is because people are complaining about high bills. The meter is rarely the problem for a high bill, but what I hear Honeywell saying is that they think that. Maybe there's fractions of percentages below on the average where people, you don't realize, and no one's calling in because their bill's a little lower than it should be. So if we went out and replaced it with the upgraded meter that was, let's say, a five percent more accurate meter. Then their bill would go up by five percent and therefore we would collect more.
Well.
Is that, is that right?
You're asking me if I agree with that, sir?
Sure.
I would have questions regarding that. Yes, I would have questions, but I would also want to. I would also want to state that the Johnson Controls only did a, a certain percentage. They may do fifty meters, whereas there's. I'd have to ask Pervez what the meter count is now, three thousand. I don't, I don't know what the top number is right now. So you're only getting a certain percentage of meters as your system as a whole. All I can speak of is the meters that we have tested did not represent the type of water loss that was being shown to us.
But you're being compelled to test these specific ones based on customers reaching out to you? Or is it truly a, a random sample every month?
No, no, we, so it's, it's, the majority of it is always is customer driven. There's a complaint about their bill. That's where the majority of it comes from. Whenever we go to look at a meter for a typical reason or something, it's, it's more in that nature that. You know, their bill was high, they don't know why.
So have we ever pulled thirty plus meters at one time and sent them off? You know, trying to actually collect a random sample of our metering to see what the true water loss is as it sits?
I, I don't believe we've sent that many at one time. Typically, when you send meters, you know, there's. There's only a, there's only a handful. There may be, you know, two meters or, or, or one meter even because it's an isolated incident.
Now, I. Harper, I, I need to interrupt here. I, it seems like you and the mayor are talking cross, crossways. So whenever we're responding to a complaint or what, whenever, I'm sorry, for the record, James, our persistence. Whenever we're responding to a complaint or something to that effect and we're pulling a meter, that's one thing. But what the mayor is asking is about the Johnson Controls audit that we do. And that is something that's different. That is more random and they do go pull meters and they do test them. Has nothing to do with whether or not a complaint was generated first.
And we, James, we do that every month?
I don't know the, I don't know the schedule, but it's, it's throughout the year. Harper, go ahead.
Johnson, I'm sorry, and you're right, you're exactly right, Mr. Art. Um I apologize. I thought you were talking about the complaints that come in and therefore we go and check on them. Um the Johnson Controls is complete now. Another aspect, though, that we need to consider is having someone to test the meters. That we're going to have to, to re-initiate here pretty quick.
But explain what the Johnson Control Audit did look like, even though the contract.
They would get a random fifty, they would select in different parts of the city, a random fifty meters and they would go and test them. They pull those meters, have them tested themselves, uh bring those back. We chose a third party. Contractor versus the city so that there's no discrepancies, there's no possible issues, total transparency. This company comes in, they test them. Um so if we have a complaint, the same thing happens. You know, we send it off to a third party. We let someone else test it, provide the results.
So the, the, what are the results on the study?
Say again?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, the, the question I'm trying to get is, when they go out and they send those fifty out and come back, what were the results? Are we experiencing water loss? Do you need more information about the accuracy of our meters than what you're getting through Johnson Controls?
And if I can piggyback on that, the fifty meters that are studied, over what course of time?
Per, Pervez should have that information.
Each, each year, per year.
Over the entirety of the year?
Yes, I believe it's a, I believe it's a year long, it's an annual deal, fifty meters. And there will be so many of like a three quarter inch residential meters and then there'll be a select few commercial meters.
So are we talking like four, four a month, four or five a month or? Is it all?
They'll pretty much do it, they'll do it, they'll do it in one sweep. They come in, they'll, they send their guys down. They'll go out with, and they pair up with our guys and they go out and collect all the meters and then test them and then it goes back in. And I, I need more information from Warren is who I need because he's the one that's been dealing with it. But I can get with him and provide you all something on that.
Well, so the, the broader topic here as it relates to the Honeywell contract is that. You know, I think if there is a case to be made from staff that we need more uh, uh information, we need more data on the water loss that we are experiencing at the meter. The Honeywell uh contract might make sense because there's information there that we can glean to know if we actually are experiencing something as close to, as drastic as what was just said. But if we're currently going through the basic process that they're recommending. The only addition that I hear is that they want us to start looking at upgrading our meters, which y'all want to. It's not a matter of desire, it's a matter of uh money. So the, what I'm trying to understand is, do we, is there something you need and can gain from this study that's being proposed? To help you better know whether or not we are losing water at the rate that they are saying?
I need further discussions with Honeywell. Like I said, when they first came out with that water loss. We did disagree at the beginning. To my knowledge, unless Warren or Tim have had further negotiations with them. I don't know that we came up with an answer to that, uh that further detailed what we were trying to find out at the time.
If I can just interject something real fast. So the water loss information Honeywell is using is provided by the city. To the Texas Water, to the Texas Water Development Board in TCEQ. So these aren't Honeywell's numbers, these are the City of Kyle's water loss numbers.
Correct, but that's a, there's a total number, it's a total water loss number. That water loss number is divided into different parts. So in other words, when we go flush a line, because we have dead in mains that we have to flush every month, there's a hundred and, a hundred plus of those that we flush. Regulating exactly how much water is flushed out of those lines is, is something that. That is not an exact accurate, it's exact, it's, is as, as accurate as we can get it with the means that we have right now. But it's not the, 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 probably the best method to get an exact number. There's also water leaks that occur. When we have a water leak, let's say you get an eight inch line. Depending on the size of that crack or a full break, um that's a, that's a, that's a high. Uh ratio difference there that it could be versus one versus the other. So those guys have to look at the size of line, size of the crack, the duration of the leak. And if they go out there to a leak that, that they didn't know had been there for quite a while, they have no idea how that was, how long that was going on. So some of those numbers are estimated. We brought forth the question, okay, how are you accounting for these over here? Could the loss be in these numbers in the flushing or in the, or in the, in the water leaks? Uh versus the meters, uh some of those questions we were wondering, just, just wanted to talk to them further to get more detail.
And, and Mr. Walter, you are correct. I mean, the, the, the leaks and, and the breaks that you mentioned do, do account for a fraction of the loss. However, based on the data that, that we collected from the Water Board, and this is coming directly from, from the billing system that tells us how much, how much water each specific residence accounts for. And that's the information that we're using. So we've actually created an average trend line for the city that tells us how much, how much on average water the city should be metering. And that, that line and the actual gallons meter deviates by a lot. And uh that's, it's on the residential water usage and on the multifamily water usage. The only section of the city that actually is above average, above the average water line, water trend line, is the commercial. The commercial infrastructure. And the reason being is, if you guys look at the matrix, the commercial side of the city's infrastructure actually lies within that, uh you know, zero to five year mark, meaning that most of that commercial infrastructure is actually new. So that's why on the commercial side, there's no problem when it comes to the, the water metering system. You guys are actually getting metering more than the average line. The problem is on the residential side and on the, on the multifamily side. And again, this information is coming from the billing data that is telling us exactly how much water is metered per, per residence and per multifamily.
So. So in, in response to that, in the past, we have had um some questions involving the water loss, because you may have a ten percent and then you all of a sudden you have a fifteen percent. And you can't contribute it to a leak because if it was a leak, it would continue. And we know if there's large leaks. Uh and if we haven't addressed any, then that just doesn't automatically change. So we have long. In the past, certain times, we have talked about that there's a, a, an issue with the billing and the actual water loss of the meters, which I think in some way is linked to, uh well, there's several factors. Okay, did they, did they take the reads at the same days? You know, did they take the reads three days after the last date or three days before? There has been discrepancies in the paperwork. Now we are logging exactly what it's showing. But it also doesn't always make sense. And I'm not sure that I'm explaining that exactly. Uh so that everybody can understand it, but on the paper, it doesn't make sense to us when you have a ten and you jump to a fifteen and the next month you jump back to a ten and you have no major leaks.
It just, it just means that the, the, the method of calculating water loss is not the most important method.
Well, I think you are explaining it correctly. If, sorry to interrupt. You are explaining correctly. I mentioned to you, Mr. Mayor, before about apparent losses versus real losses. And those are all issues with apparent, relative to apparent losses, which will be solved in great part by upgrading to a fixed base metering system. As well as, you know, you can put meters on your fire hydrants so you can, you can measure how much water is being flushed. A lot of these, you can, there's things you can do with district metering or you can actually put data loggers on your pipes to listen for leaks. A lot of these issues you're having, the easiest solution uh is to upgrade your system to a fixed base system, which is what Honeywell's proposing.
Well, and so if, if, if we're talking about a fifty percent change in one month and then fifty percent reduction back the next month, the problem's not the meter. Meters don't do that. That's not the way it works. It's a broken line, it's inflow and infiltration, it's, it's something else. But if we're taking a collective sample, I mean, it's, it's like what Alex said, he said, keep it simple. We're talking about replacing a meter. So there is one meter that's currently in the ground and it's performing at some percentage of accuracy. So far, based on everything I've heard, is that our meters are performing north of ninety seven percent accurate over the course of uh all the testing that we do. So if we're proposing to upgrade the system and put in a new meter that will last longer, that's certainly worthwhile. But I don't know how that will have some change. Like if, if you changed out all the meters in the city. Would, would we go from the ten to the fifteen to the ten again? And I think the answer is probably yes, or at least prove to me that, 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 that our meters are the reason we're having these wild swings and fluctuations. Because our, when we do our audits on our meters, they are being consistently reported back to us as being within the very tight parameters that are currently set up for us, north, plus or minus three percent off of a hundred.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we really did, that we really liked there at Public Works, my water staff. Was some of the things that Honeywell was talking about, providing, having that capability to have an instant read, you know. In the future, maybe go straight back to City Hall. Um you're able to get those real time numbers right there. If somebody talks about a water issue that they have, a high bill or whatnot, it's able to show them right there. Actually, when it's happening, they could show it and have maybe some kind of alert. All those things that they talked about that the, that the newer meters and the newer system could do, we were, we were positive and pro for that. The only, the only thing that I recall that was, was a possible topic for concern or question was the water, the actual water loss numbers. So I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
And I would be very interested to get the response from the, 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 the audits that we just went through, the fifty meters. I, I think it would be great for council to see the results of that.
And, and.
Yeah, we can.
Go ahead, Harper, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say I can get you a copy of the, uh, the last Johnson report.
You know, one of the only things I can say is that we are looking at a hundred and thirty six million gallons of water loss, right? I'm not, not saying that that is not accounted for when, with leaks and major line breaks. But to say that, that the whole or most of a hundred and thirty six million gallons can be attributed to those specific things. I, I think, uh, based on the data that we have, is, is a little concerning. I think most of the water loss is going to be in the accuracy of the older infrastructure. Again, I'm just pointing at the data. We're looking at sixty percent, over sixty percent of the infrastructure is old, older than five years. And thirty percent of, of that sixty is older than fifteen years. So, I mean, we, we could, you know, uh we don't, we are just going by the, the, the meter. The, the, the meter data, the averages, the information, the audits, that, the information that we've gathered. And the data's pointing to the accuracy of the meters. And, and that's why we feel like, that it, it, the city would be very well served on moving forward on the water meter testing. Because we will be doing a, a test on the, on the specific older infrastructure that's older than five years. That will allow the city to really see what the infrastructure is actually, the infrastructure's actually, accuracy really looks like. And based on our information, we feel that the accuracy is going to be. information, we feel that the accuracy is going to be very, very low when it comes to the older residential meters and multifamily meters, which is, which is the target assets that we're looking at. And we, we strongly believe that the, the, the tests will, will prove, prove that specifically.
Harper, and James, I don't know who wants to field this, but the Johnson report where we do the 50 meters every year, how many years have we been doing that now?
As long as I've been here, but I.
Fifteen.
Yep.
I think we just completed our 15, James.
Fifteenth year, yep.
Okay, can we get the, the numbers for the, at least maybe the past two or three years? So, we can see that, I don't want to just look at last year's. I want to look at the last few years on that. And then, what are we paying for that? Are we paying a third party for that?
Actually, the contract is complete. I believe, I will confirm, but I believe this was the last year and that it's complete. Purves may even know that information. I have, I have been, I received the booklet for it, but they come every year. They get with Warren. He gets a couple of guys to go out with them. They, they change out, you know, test them, and they've been doing this for as long as I've been here. But yes, I can get you copies of the last five years if you want them.
So, is the plan to go into another agreement with them if the contract is, has been finalized?
Well, that's something that we're discussing internally, because by TCEQ, we have to have some kind of leak, you know, meter testing and, you know, our leak detection. We already do our own leak detection. The meter testing, I feel, is a good idea to go with third party, because, you know, well, let's say you have a citizen that's upset about their meter and we test it ourselves. You know, you don't want a certain perception to be looked at. Third party takes all that out of the equation, and they test it and provide the answer for you, and that's what we go with.
Purves.
But yes, we're done with our 15.
15 or 50?
15, 1-5. We're done with our 15 year.
15 years, but 50 per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Purves, so we do, we do those 50 inspections on those, those meters per year, but did I hear you say that we also send off the meters from residents who complain about the water bill or have some sort of discrepancy with their water bill? And you have those tested as well?
Yes, sir. We, we, whenever we receive a complaint of high water bill, to provide assurance to that customer, we automatically pull their meter, send it for testing to an independent tester. We don't do ourselves. And all of those meters, as long as I've been with the city, I just completed 10 years. Every single one of them has come back within the AWWA range of acceptable range, 97% plus accuracy.
Is this the same company that we send the 50 a year to?
No, sir. We send it to a different company.
A different company, okay. And can you ballpark for me, on average, over the last couple of years, how many customer complaint meters we've sent off to be tested by the third party? Just, just say the last couple of calendar years.
I would say a typical year, we would send off maybe 10 to 12 meters.
Okay.
If, if I can add something, just to, we're all on the same page. AWWA standard is not 97% accurate. A new meter after five years, AWWA standard is 95%. And then it goes down, it goes down from there. And now, certainly possible that everything's reading at 97% and over. I'm not saying anything about that. All I'm saying is that AWWA standard is not that. And so, if you're seeing AWWA standard, that doesn't mean it's 97%. That means it's an acceptable level, depending on how many years ago the meter was manufactured. Just so we're all on the same page.
Another thing I would add is, if the meters that are being submitted for testing are coming from customer complaints of high water bills, it probably, most likely that that water meter will come within, you know, standard, because it's metering as it should, right? What we're talking about is meters that are below accuracy level that a customer wouldn't complain about, because they're actually not paying their fair share of the water that they're consuming. Those are the meters that we are more concerned about. And, you know, again, based on the data, the, the billing information that we got from the city, it's pointing in the direction that a lot of the residential water meters, again, about 30%, are experiencing those low accuracy water meter and are not paying their fair share of, of their water consumption. And those, those are the specific water meters that, that we are more concerned about.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, first.
If council wants to do this study, we award this contract to Honeywell with the condition that if the results come back, just the opposite, then that we don't owe them any money.
That's okay with me.
Are you all confident enough in their, your study and what you're proposing is accurate?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
So, you ought to be willing to take Purves up on that offer?
Yes, sir.
And we, we send it to Johnson Control.
What, what do you mean?
The, the third party testing company will be Johnson Control.
Well, that, that, I wouldn't, I'm not, I wouldn't be, I, I don't think that would be, I mean, if we're talking complete third party independent, we should, it should be a third party independent.
Well, they are independent. Honeywell, you do the sampling, you pick the meters, the meters go off to Johnson Controls' lab.
If I can add, one of the reasons why Honeywell would like approached us to work with you on the project is because we're, we've been a trusted partner of the cities for over a decade. You know, we have yearly maintenance contracts with you. We do tons of work weekly.
There's a conflict, direct conflict. You're selling meters to the city and you're also testing our meters to sell more meters.
I, I agree.
I mean, you guys put me on top spot. I don't think, I don't think that's, that's the right approach. I mean.
Why is, why is it not the right approach?
You know, I'm just basing it on the data. I, I don't believe that, you know, the, the 97 or 100% accuracy that you guys have been provided for the last 15 years is, is accurate. I think that, well, let me ask you this. The Johnson Control contract, how, how did, how did that come about? Is that part of a, a performance contract that was done by a city years back? I mean, where does, where does this yearly testing with Johnson Controls? How does, how did that come about?
And that, that was here before I was here. I've been here 12 years, so I'm, I'm not sure if it was, I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember how long James has been here. It might have been beforehand.
No, I, I'm, I'm happy to answer that question. So, again, James Earp, Assistant City Manager. The Johnson Controls audit came to be roughly about 15 years ago. The, the impetus behind it was we had just gone out and done a dramatic transition to the radio read meters that we have now. We did a, a massive replacement. And right at, right at that same time, we decided that for our water loss calculations and also just to continue to audit and keep an eye on the meters, that we wanted an, an audit process. And Johnson Controls is, you know, was the, the, the firm that was selected through that, through that process, and they have been the, the sole provider for, for the 15-year contract. The, the, the intent on my part right now would be to essentially go back out to bid again and to get a new auditor, and, and just to continue that process, just because we find that, that information valuable. And, and that way, we're not basing any decisions that we're making off of numbers that are provided to, you know, the Water Development Board or through TCEQ. You know, we're actually basing it off of random samples, just like you're proposing to do right now.
And I have another question, another question. The, the sampling that the Johnson Controls study performs, is that only on the water metering infrastructure that they upgraded at that time, or, or is it an audit on the entire infrastructure as we're proposing?
To my understanding, it's the entire, it's the entire infrastructure, and it's also based by meter size, you know, the, the samples that they pull. So, they try to select random samples from the, the different sized meters, and so on and so forth. And again, that, you know, that's, that, that contract has ended. This was the last year of, of that, of that service level. So, you know, as a part of this, it just so happens that your topic is pertinent to that, in, in the sense that it's, the, the best thing for us to probably do is to go back out to bid for a new audit service and to continue that. And then, if you have, you know, specific meters that you think we need to, you know, have pulled in that, in that test, we can sure do that. I don't think anybody is against the idea of the upgrade of meters to the new technology, you know, as the mayor, I think, so eloquently put, you know, the, the desire is there. It's really a matter of, of cost. So, so, you know, identifying what our, what our savings would actually be versus what the proposal is based off of math that comes from, you know, reports that, that you guys are pulling. You know, I think that there's some real opportunities there. I just don't know, you know, the best way to answer your question. And, and we're more, and probably the best thing to do, Harper, is to provide the, the Johnson Control, you know, reports out. There's no reason those should be public anyway, as far as I know. So.
If, if I could, I'd just like to respectfully push back on the question of objectivity on the meter test. My coworker Jeremy Lancon is on the call. If someone could let him in, he's the, he manages the Meter Services Division, because I hope, I know it's getting kind of late, but I hope he's still on the call. Jeremy Lancon, L-A-N-C-O-N, Jeremy? No? Okay, well, that's unfortunate.
Councilmember Floris Cup.
Um, so I'm kind of torn. I'm on the fence on how I feel about this. I will say, I don't think using Johnson Control to test the water would be any more fair to them than it would be for them to use their people. So, maybe if someone could find like a true third party neutral water tester, that might make the situation seem a little less biased.
Sure. Just to make it clear, all, all we would be doing is pulling meters out of the ground, sending them off to an independent third party company, the same way Johnson Controls would do it, and installing, replacing new meters. So, neither Johnson Controls nor Aquometric is actually doing the testing. All they're doing is pulling the meters and mailing them somewhere.
So, y'all would be pulling the meters and then y'all would send them off, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, so just like our sampling that we do with our contractor lines, you know, we like to send those off, because that way, there's no discrepancy. There's no issue there. Not saying that y'all would, but it just, it just, it, it, it seems to protect our water a little better if we send it off. Now, I, I think that that third party that council member was talking about, if, if Purves could maybe choose that third party that he does, that is not Johnson Controls, maybe that's an option. But having you pull it out and you send it off, to me, that's a, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I personally would agree with that either. I don't think Purves would either, because that still seems to lean in one direction.
Harper, as councilmember, just for the record, they're, all they do is pull the meter and they're sending it off to a third party. That, that's a part I, I don't understand where we're having a, it, it issue with it, because they're not testing it. They're sending it to a third party. Now, what you're insinuating is that that third party is going to be biased to them. Is that what you're insinuating?
Well, I'm just saying that when you pull that meter, you go out there and you pull that meter. Let's say some debris gets in it, whatnot. I, I don't know.
Maybe hard water, because we've got a lot of hard water in this area?
No, the sampling of the water, if, if, let's say, a contractor pulls that water, okay? And I'm just going to give you a hypothetical. Contractor pulls the water, goes down the street, gets some, you know, some different water, sends it off for sampling. They, that different water comes back. It says it's good. He hands it to you. Here you go. We're good. We passed our samples. That's why we don't allow that to happen. We will be out there. We watch them. We watch them sample it. We want to, we want to make sure that gets to the sampling place. That way, we know that there's no kind of, there's no kind of issue that could have occurred. We know that the water that was pulled there is taken and that same exact water in its true state is tested and brought back to us. So, when they're pulling those meters, to me, it's a conflict of interest if you're allowing them to pull the meters and them to send it off, because, you know, I'm just, anything could happen with that meter while it's sent off, and then it comes back and they say it's bad, and they say, okay, your meter's bad. Versus if it was pulled with us there, we send it to a third party. The third party tested, that rules that out. I'm just throwing that out there.
So, we have a, we have an ongoing service contract with the city. So theoretically, we could, in, while we're servicing meters, we could break a meter and then you'd have to buy another one from us to replace it. We don't do that because integrity, and also, it's a valued relationship that's been built over a decade. You know, and, and, and if you like, I'm sure you could, you know, come along with the meters, the people who are pulling the meters while they do it.
Yeah, it's, 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 I, I, you know, I've, I've given my professional opinion, and I think Purves has already given his, and I think it's ultimately the council's decision what y'all would like to do.
And what we're proposing is an, an unbiased test that will really tell the story of what the infrastructure for the city looks like. We, we don't want to oversell something. The data is already telling us that there's an accuracy problem. Again, this is billing data that the city provides, billing data that is, that is sent as an audit to the Water Development Board. This is coming directly from the city. All we're doing is analyzing the trends, looking at how many more meters you guys are adding every year, year over year, and what the consumption looks like. And the data is telling us that there is a huge inaccuracy in what, what the infrastructure looks like. And the study, that's, all it's going to do is determine what that inaccuracies are. So, we are proposing an unbiased, third party test. Like Scott mentioned, we can have the city facilities and administration with us, or with the team that's going to be pulling the infrastructure, and put a process in place where, you know, it's going to be as objective and as unbiased as possible if, if, you know, the teams want to be with us when, when they get sent out to the third party water, water meter testing organization. We can do that. Again, we want it to be objective. We want it to be unbiased. We want to provide the city with a representation of what the infrastructure looks like.
Mayor Protim, I have a, a couple thoughts that I think might help us come to some resolution here. Number one is the, what's interesting to me is that the Johnson Controls' contract just expired. So, it seems like there might be an opportunity for Honeywell to come in and do testing in year 16, essentially, because we're not currently set up to, to, to do that. So, we might not be double dipping. So, for example, if we were going to hire a new auditor to come in this next fiscal year and do 50 samples, and while simultaneous, simultaneously doing Honeywell, it seemed like maybe we're not being very wise there. But, so, so I would be comfortable if we're, if, if staff thinks that it's fine, probably moving forward and, and seeing what the results come back, because whatever they bring back is not binding. And it's not as wasteful to my, to my palate if, if the Johnson Controls' contract just expired, and so there's a window of time where this might be opportune there. That said, I, I don't know what the results of the last 15 years of the That said, I don't know what the results of the last 15 years of the studies have been. We have not received, you know, any indication that our metering is out of order. And if that was the case, then I would certainly expect that staff would have been providing us with some updates that our auditing is coming back with, you know, with metering that's outside of the, the specs, so. But Luis's point, or I, I'm not sure who said it, but where the, the window grows from the first few years to year five, to year 10, if, as far as how out of compliance a meter can be is, is interesting. So there's just questions that are still out there that we're circling around, but nobody knows, because nobody's putting their eyes on the Johnson Controls study to provide us with that feedback. So my challenge with approving the contract right now is that we haven't actually seen the Johnson Controls studies to make, to, to see if there's anything in there. I find it highly improbable that, that one third-party company is going to be coming back with wildly different numbers than another. And so that conversation doesn't, doesn't really make sense, because I don't know why any third-party company would even be incentivized to provide bad data. Hopefully whichever third-party company that we use would have the same measure of auditing as far as what water they use and making sure that they get accurate readings, right? I mean, a third-party company needs to get, to give accurate readings, so.
And the, the, the water metering companies, they have to use AWA standards to test, so that.
Yeah, so if your, if your belief is that if we give you this contract, your numbers are going to come back wildly different than the Johnson Controls study and that if you, if they don't, then you're not going to charge us for the work that you've performed. If you've agreed to it to that extent, then I'm comfortable moving forward without even looking at the studies. But if that's not the case, then we can, I'd prefer to wait until we get some analysis around the actual studies and reports.
I mean, we'll go ahead and take the cost on us, as long as we, we get to use the, the third-party testing organization that, that we've had already had in mind, as, like...
So why is that, Luis? Why do you, why do you care? Is it a cost issue with y'all?
No, I just...
Because that's giving us all, that's making us all kind of go, why are you focused on that? Because it doesn't...
I, I just, I mean, if...
Shouldn't be a deal point.
I mean, it just, it just feels a little biased, you know, having to, having to use Johnson Controls to, to run a, a study for something that should be unbiased and third, and completely third-party.
Right, but you just agreed to take, you just agreed to take on the cost yourself of the study?
And the results come back.
And disagreed with which third-party company we used. That doesn't make sense to me. The risk you're taking is on the first end, not which third-party company we use. I, I just don't understand. I wish I did. It's a strange conversation even to have, but it doesn't make sense that you would be worried about which company we use. I don't care, except for this conversation's making me care. It, it's...
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, mayor. Just for me, just know that Johnson Controls and Honeywell are two companies that compete for contracts. And when you're using one to, to get the other one, you're, you're discrediting one of the others. So that's the reason that you don't want to use Johnson Controls.
I didn't, I didn't think of them as competitors, but thank you for saying that. Is that, is that the case?
That is correct, sir. Johnson Controls is definitely one of our competitors.
Well, now I understand. So if they're a competitor, hmm.
Mayor, this is Harper. I was, I was going to say, that's why I suggested earlier, if you had a third-party, that's not Johnson, it's not theirs, then maybe that's the route to go.
Well, that's what Councilmember Floris Kell recommended. Is that, would you be okay with that if we said not Johnson Controls or your, you, but, but somewhat, some new company?
The only, Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
The only thing is that when you're, when you do studies like this, you build relationships and you build trust with certain companies. When you're going outside that trust zone, you don't know what that company, you've got no working relationship with them, you don't know what they're going to come back with, you don't know what their procedures or their policies are. When you're working with a company, you, you like to know what their history was, what their history with you and the company's been. And when you're using someone that you don't know, then you're taking a chance. It's like you're, you're, it's a risk. And that's why I understand why they're comfortable with who they use, because they've worked with them, they trust them. There's, in, in business, you have to build those trusts with companies. They're going to, they're not going to do anything to mitigate that trust, because they know that you can use someone else later, especially if you're a company like Honeywell or e- even Johnson Controls. The people they work with is because they trust them, just as, as we do when, when we, in business as well. You know, we build these relationships with people we trust. As, as I am in commercial, you know, in commercial retail, we definitely build trust with roofing companies, we build trust with plumbers, we build trust with electricians. I go with the same ones, because I trust them. When I recommend someone to one of our, our tenants in our commercial side, I always make sure that I send them somebody who's reputable, because if I send them someone I don't trust, or I don't know, they could do some bad work and then it comes back on us. So the relationships are important when you're doing something like this, especially in a study.
And the relationships, not just between us and Honeywell, but us and the city. Aquometric Sales Company, based in Selma, I would be willing to bet, has done a lot more work on the metering side than Johnson Controls has, considering we've been providing you all the meters and the radios and the radio read system and the yearly support contract for it for a decade plus. So, you know, I know that I, you folks probably aren't super familiar with me, but my company in the city of Kyle has a rock-solid relationship built over many, many years.
I can appreciate those comments, the, the, you know, you are, you are telling us that the company that we've been using for the last 15 years is giving us bad information. So that's where the trust conversation is.
That's not, that's, that's how I could miss. The, the, the meters are giving you bad information. These, you know, he's talking, he's talking about meters that might be 15 years old or more. You know, those meters were out of warranty a long time ago. So I'm going to respectfully push back on the idea that we're somehow giving you bad information.
I think you're saying Johnson Controls is the one giving us bad information.
Well, I think what you're saying...
Based on what you all have said. Sorry, I know y'all interrupted us a number of times tonight and it's really working my nerves. So when we're talking, it's probably best to not interrupt. So I think the, the concern there is if, if, and I, this is the first time I've heard that you all are competitors with Johnson Controls, but you're telling us what we've been doing with the meters and what they've been giving us isn't accurate. That's essentially what you're, what you're telling us.
I mean, you can draw that conclusion from the data that, that we've presented. Again, if you guys have been doing independent studies with Johnson Controls for 15 years and they keep coming back at 100%, I think there's, there's a discrepancy there if the assets are older than 15 years, right? And the second point is, again, the billing meter information that we have reflects the losses. So I'm going by the facts, I'm going by the billing information that the city's providing, that the city, the city data says, and that's telling me that from, you know, multifamily 2018 to 2019, the city experienced over almost 20 million gallons of water loss in multifamily resident, uh, usage. And in 2018 to 2019, we're talking about another almost 20 million gallons as well. So, I mean, just in, in this, in the two-year gap, we're talking about almost 50 million gallons of water deficit year over year. So when, when you, when you got, when you say that the Johnson Controls testings are coming back at 100%, I say that the data points otherwise.
I don't know what the Johnson Controls testing are coming back, because I have not seen the reports. I'm assuming they're within spec, otherwise we would have heard something. That's what I said. I didn't say that all of our meters are reading 100%.
I, I think they had said 97% multiple times during this conversation. I, I agree with you, mayor, that this is a good time, because the Johnson contract is up, so this could be a good time to look at another third-party company. I do know that over the course of sitting on this dais, I've had several conversations with residents in this community that complain about discrepancies in their water bill, that can't point to leaks, but get bills that shoot up one month every one to two years and then come back down. Those are the people who get the complaints, that their meter gets tested and it comes back as accurate. And then yet there's nothing for them to point to of what happened with their water. And it could totally be their fault and they're not admitting to it, but there are certain people that I've talked to that I know aren't just pulling my leg or don't want to take responsibility. So I've always wondered about our metering system. I think it's a good time for us to look at it through a different lens, so to speak. But we're getting so in the weeds with this that I, I kind of want 35 meters to go to one third-party company and that same 35 meters to go to another third-party company and see what the difference is. Like, I'm, I mean, this is where we're getting with this thing, and I don't mind it, because I kind of want to do it to end the conversation. So, but what I want more than anything, when I go back to the original conversation with you, Scott, is I want to have value out of this for the city. I don't want us to spend any money. I think it's a good point in time right now where that contract is over, to where we can find the value in this. I know that there's conflicts of interest in everything, there's competition, it's the world we live in. I'm going to leave it up to staff to help us figure that out and get through that, but we should probably do something in the realm of having our water meters checked by someone other than Johnson, at least for the next year or two, just to find out what the accuracy truly is, and it might come back exactly the same. But that's kind of where I'm at on it. I'm clearly open to lots of possibilities of having these meters checked by multiple sources. But I'm kind of at a loss of where to go from here. Scott?
Yeah. Mayor Protem, I appreciate your comments. The reason why I led off with the AMR versus I, AMI conversation is because that's really where we should be best meeting the residents' concerns when it comes to a monthly reading perspective. What I hope that the city gains out of this study, more than the water loss and the revenue loss, is that we get the true propagation and figure out what meters need to be swapped out with the radios and what can't be, so we would upgrade those meters over time. The, the conversation about water loss, revenue loss, is really one of how do we pay for the system over time, or if we, if we need to retrofit more meters. I think that will come. Of course, it's part of the study, even if we didn't do, include that part within the study. To me, the, the, really the key piece is the propagation for the AMI. Ultimately, as we continue to replace our meters, 95, 97, 100%, clearly the, the touchless meters are more accurate. It's a new tech, it's, it's proven itself, it's better than the old turbine-driven meters. We know that. Turbine-driven are always going to have small amounts of water loss. I think what we will end up doing as a city over time is we will replace our meters with the touchless meters. It may take much longer than doing it all at once, whether it's as a three, four million dollar project, which I know is, is the ideal way to do it, but could we, could we ease our way into it over time, replacing the old turbine meters with a touchless? Absolutely, we can do that. And then, you know, we're looking at getting the AMI, getting, starting with the radios, ultimately we go to the, the, that meter housing body, and we just need to see at what pace we need to do it. And hopefully this study will tell us that.
So some, some great news for the city is, a couple years ago, y'all started buying the new style radio. And so whether it's in two months or longer, when you eventually do elect to upgrade, all the work, all this stuff that's been installed now is just going to switch right over, and so that's great. We ran the propagation analysis as part of the project, and I think it's included in the packet.
Yes, it is.
Two base stations, so two pieces of infrastructure, we'll read all your meters. It's built in for growth, so there's a map on here, one of these pages.
I think, guys, at this point...
It's, it's fine, yeah.
Our eyes are going to start glazing over here really soon and you're just going to see more jargon of stuff that we don't really know. So what I, what I'm looking for is some resolution here from the council of, or some, some consensus on what to do next here, with staff's input, is can we move forward with this item in a way to where staff feels that they can build it in to the agreement that we get the value that we're looking for, that we get these studies? I don't know why you guys landed on 35 meters and we already had 50 with, with Johnson. I don't know why the difference is there, what that means dollar-wise, but what, what do we need, Scott, to be able to make this? And Harper, I know you talked about the instant read stuff. What do we need to make this worth our time for these studies so that we can either decide for or against this right now? Because we, we have a lot to, to move on, or do we need to postpone this item and talk about it again, once we get information back? But I don't, I'm not really interested in another hour and a half discussion on this either, so, for a future meeting. So where, where are you at, Scott? Where are you at, mayor? I'm looking at you, I'm looking at you, councilmember Dex. Where can we go?
Do you want to go first?
Let's go, Scott.
Okay. You know, I, I, we have been talking with Honeywell for months and months. You know, they've, they've done several analyses, they've interviewed a lot of people and they've, I, I, I want to believe that, that the data's good. I know we can question it all night. They, they've done, I think they've acted in good faith, they've brought the cost of the study way down. We've worked with them to remove a lot of things that are probably extraneous at this point to the city of Kyle. $29,000 from our water fund, water utilities, seems like a fair price to pay for what we're going to get out of it.
So then to my colleagues, and the, the mayor and, and councilmember Dex in particular, because I could feel the most resistance from, from you both, is that something that you're okay with? Or do we need to postpone, or do we need to look at other options? I just want us to work through this and, and get it done, one way or another.
I'm, personally, it's contingent on whether or not we tie the motion to a clawback if their results come back similar to their competitors' results. I don't know which of those two scenarios I'd be more excited to see. There's, if they came back wildly different, then where do you go? If they came back substantially the same, I guess maybe that is helpful, but it really doesn't compel us forward. So I'm, I'm, I'm a no, I think we just motion and vote. But it's not the end of the world, and I totally understand the reason for it, but I, I'm not convinced that, that we're taking the right approach here on this topic, but I think we should just vote.
Before we vote, can I say something?
Yes.
Yvonne Floris Kell for the record. I want to apologize to you two men, because I think council is not representative of the city right now. I think we're all a little tired and we're all a little frustrated and we seem to be forgetting the fact that you guys are spending your time here, just like we are. So I apologize for everybody who seems to have a bad mood or negative or confused look on their face, because that does not represent our city.
Well, I appreciate that and I don't do myself any favors when I get fired up and so, you know, it's been a, an interesting experience for all of us.
Can I also say, let this be a lesson, that we ask questions before we come to city council meetings? We've had this information prior to this meeting and if nobody reached out to Scott or to Mr. Rizzo at any time, that's really not fair to, to people that are sitting up there answering all our questions.
Well, this is the process on a lot of items, and you got to go through and you got to talk them through. And you got to go through and you got to talk them through. Councilmember Ellison, do you have anything to say before we put this up for a vote?
Sure, yeah. And I'm certainly ready to vote as well. I'm certainly not sure who my colleague is talking to or about. I'm here to represent the interest of the people of Kyle. And vendors and merchants and folks come in here all the time. And that is not who I represent. And that is not my interest. And asking questions, hard questions of those that are trying to take suitcases full of money away from us to do business, and certainly there are legitimate reasons for getting that money, this is part of the process. And I do not in any way take back anything that I've done tonight. And I certainly stand by my comments earlier of when we're having a presentation and my colleagues are speaking, that they not be interrupted. I think that's a fair request. And it should be handed decorum anywhere. But with that being said, I'm ready to vote as well. I've heard enough.
I'm just going to add to that. I think what you're witnessing is how much this council values the dollars that are in the budget. And we don't give those dollars away easy. We pride ourselves in our fiscal responsibility. And it comes off as maybe a little harder on vendors, on developers, on people who want to do business with the city. But we're always looking for the best. And we're looking for the most bang for our buck. And that's why I've been harping on value since we got here, because I see $29,000. And I want to know what my city is going to get for $29,000, because I can take $29,000 and put it somewhere else where I know there's going to be more value. Or you are going to show me immense value for my money and show me how to save more money in the future. And I don't mind those kinds of studies. I don't kind of mind those kinds of assessments. But if I know my staff is not going to use them, then I'm throwing money away. So it's nothing against you guys. It's everything about this city and how we run it and how this council cares about those dollars. So I think that's what you're witnessing. I'm proud when this council pushes back on things. I think it's our responsibility to do that. And we will continue to do that. No one comes and gets $29,000 with one or two pitches in this town. It's just not how it works anymore. With that, I do support the idea of you guys doing this study simply because of what our Public Work Director said, of what our city manager said, that this could be a good time for us to look at a different company to give us that evaluation. I don't want to be beholden to you guys for any more than the length of this study, this one year, or whatever the timeline is there. I don't want to be beholden to have to use Honeywell from that point on. What I do want is a very accurate study. And it's going to say a lot when it comes back the same as Johnson, who we have a 15-year relationship with. But just because we have a 15-year relationship with them doesn't mean we just keep doing the same thing, because it's the way we've always done it. So I do think it's time. It makes time. Your timing is great. Your timing is great because that contract is over. So I'm going to go ahead and support this, knowing, looking at you, Scott, and you on there, Harper, to get us what we need to get this value out of this. Last thing we want to do is waste this money. So with that said, if no one else has anything to say, I'm going to go ahead and motion to approve item 27 as written. I don't know if I need amended Scott in any way, or you can still tinker with it. I don't know if there's an agreement attached to this.
Yeah, there is.
Is there anything that needs to be amended to that agreement? Okay. As written.
Unless you want to add, you know, what was proposed earlier, that if the results do not come back in our favor, that the company does not...
I don't think it's necessary, because I know we paid Johnson for the studies. I know we paid Johnson for their studies, whatever the return is. So I'm basically saying, year 16, we're allowing this third-party to do it. But that's it. We're not in a 15-year contract. We're in a one-time study with them. And then we can reevaluate what we think. And I think we also need to get the Johnson study information from the past five years with some sort of presentation on top of that to show us the difference of what's there.
Yes, sir.
So I make that a motion on item 27 to approve as written.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Rizzo. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote before I do that. Is there any further discussion on the item?
Yeah, I've got one more thing. I just want to ask a question to Harper. The company they use, will we be able to substitute the findings from this study to meet our compliance, TCQ compliance? You said TCQ requires that we measure our loss on a consistent basis and provide reports to them.
Yeah, it goes to, there's a, the Water Development Board is, we send them, as well as TCQ requires the leak flushing, the, what do you call it? The, I'm sorry, I'm struggling right now. The leak detection. They require the leak detection, and then you have to have some kind of accuracy program. So I need to talk to Tim to see where we are in this particular year with that. But I can find that out and let you know. I don't know when they submit it. Tim Sanford, our Treatment Division's operator, Division Manager, is the one who provides
No further questions.
Just one point of clarification from the attorney.
Sure. I'm hearing that the, I'm hearing the terms, there's a letter of intent in this backup material. And what the letter of intent does is to say that for the next 90 days, city can't negotiate with any other service provider that provides these same services while you're trying to enter into a contract with them. If you don't reach a contract, that's fine, but you're going to reimburse them $29,000 for any kind of review they do during that period of time. But there's not, it'd be better if there was a specific requirement in here that you do the testing on a certain number of meters, because it doesn't really say that.
Okay.
So if the intent is that you're going to be authorized to do testing on a certain number of meters during a certain period of time, that we need to revise this agreement to require that.
We can update that. That's not a problem. We can definitely agree on the number of meters that's going to be tested, and we can make that update. That's not a problem.
How do we do that page from up here? Do I need to rescind the motion and then restate it?
Restate it. If, maybe withdraw it and restate it.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and withdraw my motion. You withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
So you would engage Honeywell International to test 30, is it 35 meters? For, what's in here is $29,000. With that, is it a 90-day period that you come back with the results? Is that what the...
So do you want to speak to how long the water meter testing takes? How long it takes?
Well, the meter testing portion is like two or three weeks.
Do we stick to the 90 days?
Yeah, you stick to 90 days. And if there's some parameters around how that testing's supposed to be done, that's outside of my knowledge.
Right. So how should we state that? With the 35 meters, testing 35 meters and a 90-day timeline?
And engage Honeywell to test 35 meters for $29,000 would be the cost for $29,000 to be completed within 90 days. And direct city attorney to revise the document to reflect that. Authorize city manager to sign it.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve item number 27 to engage Honeywell International into an agreement of $29,000 to study infrastructure investment with the testing of 35 meters to be completed within 90 days. And direct the city attorney to revise the document to reflect that. Is that good enough, Paige?
That's good.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem. I have a second by Councilmember Rizzo. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Next up, city manager's report.
All right. You want to go full screen? Perfect. All right. I will be brief. Right, Dex? I will be brief. Okay. Several things. So first, we will talk about, I see the screen is blacked out, so hopefully, is it still sharing? No?
No.
Okay. I'm just going to start talking. Hope the presentation can catch up to me. I want to talk first about early voting. So our election day for the runoff is December 8th, so we back out from that date. And our early voting dates are November 26th through December 4th. So that is up on the screen. So you have the specific days and times on the screen. That is all available on our website at citethekyle.com/election. But please make sure we get that, and we will make sure we get that out, but through your channels as well. And you see the locations for early voting and the election day. Next is our adult roller hockey league. We have had a great turnout at the Ash Pavilion, and I encourage anybody to drive by there, really anytime during the day or evening when those lights are on and most likely it is being used. One of the great things is that Ash's dad, Stephen, has volunteered to run an adult hockey league. And so you can see the time for the signup, the registration, and the times that those games will be played. So we look forward to seeing many more people in the community sign up. I know we have almost two dozen already that have expressed interest.
Scott, also, there's...
Yes, sir.
There's a team out of Lockhart that was out there one evening when I was playing basketball, and they're expressing interest as well.
Fantastic. It really is just really good. Really, really good, great. Next, City of Kyle offices are closed for Thanksgiving, Wednesday and Thursday, 26th and 27th. And finally, we did have another great mass food distribution event. I'll let councilmembers who were there discuss that. We have one more coming up on December 12th at Lehman High School from 8:00 to 11:00. Again, just like last time, volunteers are needed. And this is open to all, if you need food for the holidays especially, please come through and partake in this event. As always, we're so appreciative of our partnership with Central Texas Food Bank, TDS, Lehman High School, city council, the public who volunteers, the staff. These have been great events, just really great events. With that, I know a couple of councilmembers who were there, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about this last one.
Mayor Protem. Yeah, just Councilmember Rizzo for the record. We had a great turnout. We had over 1,300 families serve that day. We had Representative Aaron Zwinger there. We had Councilmember Villalobos Tobias. We had a lot of people from the community, students from Texas State that also volunteered. And we also had volunteers from the hospital as well. So it was great to talk to everybody and see everybody out there. The event went pretty smoothly. We got enough families through there, and it was great to see the turnout and the appreciation from everyone. But again, I just want to thank all the partners involved. HACISD, you know, Central Texas Food Bank, city staff, everyone that supports this, TDS as well. It's a community event, and it's a lot of partners involved, and it truly serves the community. I think it's a great event. I think the need's going to be there for several more months, and I hope we can continue to bring this much-needed food to the community.
Yes, Councilmember Tobias. Just real quick, I was out there as well. I encourage the new councilmembers, if they're interested in helping out. Of course, we're going to have another one in December. But just again, it was nice to see all the families out there that needed the help. They really showed their gratitude. And so I just wanted to also thank Samantha Rooster and everybody in the city staff for getting it going. There was just only one small hiccup. There was a basketball game that was to be held that morning. And so they were just asking if, in the future, to get with the school district to see how they can make that logistically go a lot smoother. But it worked out after all. But I just want to say thank you to everybody. It was a great event.
Okay.
Concludes my report.
All right. Next up, we are going to convene into executive session. Councilmember Bradshaw, will you read the information and get us into exec?
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. One, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551 dot zero seven one, one oh, I'm sorry, 104 South Burleson, bond, fund, projects, and related agreements to possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551 dot zero seven two, 201 South Burleson.
Motion to reconvene?
Second.
No action was taken in executive session. No action will be taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned.